Meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission to order. It is Wednesday, January 29th, four o'clock in the afternoon. Let me welcome each and every one of you to a new year and to the meeting. We've got a long meeting. It's going to be a great meeting with a lot of incredible agenda items, so why don't we go ahead and get started? For the invocation, it is my honor and privilege to welcome and introduce Pastor Betsy Willet Zierden of Good Samaritan United Methodist Church that will provide the invocation. If you'll please stand and join me.
Thank you for the invitation. I'm glad to be here. Let us pray. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Creator and Sustainer of the universe, Spirit of life, love, community, and justice, we pause this afternoon to acknowledge you and ask for your wisdom, blessing, and guidance upon our city leaders as they discern along with the community the ways you have already prepared for us to grow in grace and goodness as citizens of the city of Tallahassee. It is here we live, work, and play. It is here where many of us have grown up, and it is here where many of us will die. Grant that in the time you have given us and with the gifts and resources that you have provided us, we will work to make Tallahassee like a city on the hill, a beacon of light, a place where all are safe to walk all of our streets, a place where all of our schools are A schools, and where all of our neighbors have opportunities to thrive. May the work of the City Commission contribute to your vision, your divine vision, of justice and mercy for all. This we pray in the name of all we hold sacred and true. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my honor and privilege to invite PAC 114 forward. Cub Scout PAC 114 is -- come on down, gentlemen. It's from Gilchrist Elementary School. They are working on their government badge. They are wee-below's that will be transitioning into Boy Scouts very, very soon. Mark, Jason, fearless leaders, thank you very much. Gentlemen, flag is over here. If you will please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, gentlemen. You can return to your seats. Thank you, PAC 114. Ladies and gentlemen, if you didn't notice, one of them looked a lot like me. That's my oldest son, Tommy Daley, that was there as well.
That blushy one.
Very proud of all of our Cub Scouts, and you did a great job with Government Day today. So with that, Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've got one update. It's an updated attachment, labeled Attachment 2, which is a map to Item 13.08.
Excellent. Any questions? Seeing none, we will move on with presentations. Ladies and gentlemen, we have three wonderful presentations. The first presentation, I would like to invite Charlie Johnson of the Canopy Road Citizen Committee. Where are you, Charlie? Come on down and join me. Mindy Mooreman, our Cindy Urban Forester, and all of our arborists from City of Tallahassee. I want all y'all to come join me, please. We've got a great crowd. Y'all do fantastic work, and I want you to be recognized as well. Oh, Charlie not -- Charlie not going to be here either? Okay, Forrest, thanks for joining us. Appreciate it, man. Now, I'd like to read, "From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation: Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees; and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world; and whereas Tallahassee, a designated Tree City USA, is known for its trees and iconic canopy roads; and whereas at 55 percent, the city boasts one of the highest percentages of tree coverage in the nation, and the species of trees found in this area are one of the most diverse in the nation according to biodiversity maps; and whereas the City of Tallahassee and Leon County recognize Arbor Day annually by cooperating in a joint community planting event; and whereas volunteers participated in planting more than 150 trees at the 2019 Arbor Day event at Lake Alberta Park, including fruit and nut-bearing trees such as mahogany, citrus, chestnut, and pecan; and whereas the City of Tallahassee planted over 700 trees through the community last year as well; and whereas the city and the county, with support from the community volunteers, will again cooperate in a community event this past Saturday, actually, we recognize, at Martha Wellman Park, where we planted more than 170 trees once again; and whereas trees provide valuable benefits to the environment, such as cleaning the air, reducing stormwater runoff, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife; and whereas trees in our community increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, reducing our heating and cooling costs, and beautify our community; and whereas trees have always been an important part of our community's excellent quality of life, adding joy and spiritual comfort to generations of residents and visitors alike. Now therefore, I, John Evans Daley, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby recognize this past Saturday, January 25th, 2020, as Arbor Day in the City of Tallahassee, and urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to help continue the long-lasting relationship between trees and our community. I further encourage Tallahassee residents to support efforts to protect our existing trees so that we may have all -- may all enjoy the many benefits of our majestic mature trees in the future. Signed, today's date, January 29th, 2020, John Daley." Let me present this to you and give you the opportunity to speak as well. You can clap, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Forrest Watson. I'm the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Council Committee for the Canopy Roads, and it's an honor to serve this community. And here's to more canopy, prettier canopies, and long-living trees. And it's great work that all the city does, as well as the county, so it's just an honor to be a part of this whole process. So thank you very much.
Forrest, thank you. Mindy, you want to say a couple words as well?
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing all the arborists in the city from multiple city divisions, parks, community beautification, utilities, public infrastructure. We're all on the ground every day caring for our trees, and I think all these people are testament to how much work the city puts into caring for our tree canopy. So happy Arbor Day.
Happy Arbor Day. Human Trafficking Prevention Month. I'd like to invite my friends to come join me. Christina Bailey is also representing the International Rescue Committee. The proclamation, "From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, whereas human trafficking is the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of forced labor or sexual servitude; and whereas human trafficking is a $150 billion a year global criminal enterprise and is also a civil and human rights violation; and whereas the Trafficking Victims Protection Act of 2000 criminalized human trafficking at the federal level; and whereas Florida first passed anti-trafficking legislation in 2004; and whereas the National Human Trafficking Hotline ranks Florida as third in the number of calls reported to the hotline; and whereas more awareness and education are crucial to eradicating human trafficking in our communities and state and nation; and whereas both sex and labor trafficking are present in Tallahassee, and it is important for the community to increase its focus and awareness of both of these forms of human trafficking; and whereas the International Rescue Committee and its partner, Survive and Thrive Advocacy Center, have a strong commitment to social justice and work to assist survivors of human trafficking and raise awareness of this horrific phenomenon in Tallahassee and neighboring communities; and whereas January is National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month and is observed in municipalities across the country in order to educate the public and raise awareness about human trafficking, now therefore, I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee and my colleagues, the entire City Commission, hereby proclaim January 2020 as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, and further recognize the International Rescue Committee and the Survive and Thrive Advocacy Center, the Big Ben Coalition Against Human Trafficking, and the many agencies and businesses, individuals, faith communities, and others for their role in building awareness in the local community of both labor and sex trafficking and assisting survivors. Dated today, January 29th, 2020, signed with my signature, John Daley." I'm going to present this to you. Christina, I'd like you to speak first. Both of you ladies, please, come forward for some comments.
Hi, everybody. My name is Christina Bailey. I'm the Human Trafficking Program Coordinator for the International Rescue Committee, so I just wanted to take the time to say thank you to Mayor Daley and everybody here for the recognition of today, or the month of January, as Human Trafficking Month. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. One of the things that people often think is that human trafficking only happens in big cities, and they don't realize that in our community, especially also the rural areas around us, that unfortunately, human trafficking, both sex and labor trafficking, are alive and well. My name's Robin Hasler Thompson. I'm the Executive Director of STACK, the Survive and Thrive Advocacy Center, and we have worked for about five years now, locally, to address this issue. We're immensely grateful to you, Mr. Mayor, and to the Commission, and to everyone, especially all of our partners, many of whom are here in the community, because there's only one way we can do this work. It truly does take a village. So we thank you very much. I'd also like to recognize our board member. We have a board member, Kelly Adi, who's here. We have a really strong working board, and we do our best in the community to help end this phenomenon, so thank you.
Thank you. Shall we get a picture real quick?
Yes.
When I was a county commissioner and we created the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, you were my first appointment, as a matter of fact, and we have a relationship that goes back many, many, many years. So our final presentation tonight actually is a very special presentation that will be done by two wonderful individuals of our community. I'd like to invite Pastor Lee Johnson to come forward and his wife, Dot Inman Johnson. I'd like to also remind you that we are so honored to have both of them here. Dot Inman Johnson, who set history in the City of Tallahassee as the first female African-American mayor to serve our community. Wonderful to have you here.
We also have a member of our church here, Mr. DeForest Simmons. It is my extreme pleasure to make a presentation to one of our city officials, and I would like to ask city attorney Cassandra Jackson to join us. As she is coming, we, Love by Jesus Family Church, for the last three years, has been celebrating Black History by honoring Black History First in their particular fields in our community. And we do it in January specifically because we don't want to do it during Black History Month because we feel Black History is happening all the time. So it is my honor, because our city attorney had to be out of town and could not be with us at the Civic Center for the awards dinner, to present her with her award at this City Commission meeting, and it reads, "Love by Jesus Family Church presents the 2020 Black History First-in-Law Award to Mrs. Cassandra Jackson." And I want to point out that she is not only the first city attorney for the City of Tallahassee, she is the first appointed official for the City of Tallahassee who happens to be Black, African-American. Thank you so much.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the mayor and the city commissioners and the great confidence they have placed in me in selecting me for city attorney for the City of Tallahassee. It is indeed my pleasure and my honor to serve in this position, and I have to say I'm very humbled by this award, and that's because, mostly because of the great people that I admire in history who preceded me, who did such great things, and in particular, my role model, Thurgood Marshall, and the great things he did as the first African-American for the United States Supreme Court. So standing somewhat in their shadow, but thankful for all they did, because it is people like that that gave me the opportunity to have this opportunity to serve you, I thank you.
We are very honored and privileged to work with you each and every day, and it's great to be able to stand down there. I do have to say that I would be remiss if I didn't happen to mention that it's great to see former Mayor Inman Johnson, who is also my third-grade art teacher at Gilchrist Elementary School, and it's great to see her as well. Moving on, do we have any announcements, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir, no announcements.
Okay. We are at the time of the meeting for citizen input on agenda items. Let me remind each and every one of you that we will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting if anybody would like to speak on a non-agenda item. This portion of the meeting is set aside specifically for those individuals that'd like to speak on something that has been agendted, but you think you might not be able to stay for the meeting until we get to that point. So with that, Mr. Clark, do we have any speakers?
We do, Mayor. The first speaker at this point is Stanley Sims. He'll be followed by Margot Thomas. As Mr. Sims comes to the microphone, I'll remind speakers who have spoken before and those who are new that each speaker will have three minutes for his or her remarks. There is a timer that will have a light right there in front of you that will turn from green to yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining.
Before you start my time, Mr. Mayor, because of my health, if you don't mind, this is a non-agenda item, but it won't take long. I just want to do it, and then I got to go. Is that okay?
Yeah, I will. Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Mayor, Commission, y'all camera can look down on my foot. I got a nice shoe shine. Reason why I have this nice shoe shine is I've been working with the Downtown Improvement Authority and with OEV to get minority businesses downtown. This week, you can call Tyrone. Call him. That's what he does. I'm so grateful to Mr. Alan Thompson, to Elizabeth with the Downtown Improvement Authority, also the staff of OEV to help us put this together. Mr. Tyrone is right in front of the Governor's Club. Please support him. We're asking. I've already talked to the media. I'm putting them on Front Street. This is the type of thing that we are working for inclusion in our downtown area. I don't know if you are not aware, but we don't have any Black businesses downtown, but now we have a minority entrepreneur downtown. We're not stopping with the shoe shine. We're looking for a peanut and a hot dog man. You understand? So if y'all know someone who can cook some good peanuts, tell them I got the hookup. We are really working to diversify not only our workplaces downtown, but all across Tallahassee, Mayor. We are very excited. I'm the Executive Director of Help: Helping Entrepreneurs Leverage Prosperity. I'm very honored here tonight, today, to have one of my board members with me, and so I'm no longer standing alone. I might be leaning, but I ain't falling. I'm excited, in the words of the great Chico Remfro, "If I sound excited, it is because I am excited." And Help Organization, with your continued support, will continue to move the change in a positive direction. Commissioner Curtis Richardson, I do want to thank you, sir, for putting up with me. That's what I call it. Mayor Pro Tim, me and Commissioner Richardson, we went to the shed.
You have about 30 seconds.
We went to the shed. You know what I'm talking about. And when you go to the shed, what happens at the shed is stay at the shed. Ain't that right, Commissioner? And so I'm very happy. I'm very excited. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to go first so I can go home and deal with myself, but thank you. I also want to say congratulations to the best city manager on this side of heaven, who's been my white boss, and she's a very good boss. We need her job.
Thank you, Pastor Simmons.
We need her pay.
Thank you, Pastor Simmons.
We really need her working.
I hope you feel better, Pastor Simmons. Thanks for joining us. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, the next speaker is Margot Thomas on Item 1308, which is the review of the CHSP Needs Assessment Report.
Ms. Thomas, thank you for joining us. Appreciate it. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much. I'm Margot Thomas. My address is 4428 Anastasia Court, Tallahassee, Florida 32305. I am here representing Take Stock in Children at Tallahassee Community College, which is a mentoring program, college readiness, and we also provide a two-year scholarship for students who are from low-income families. Our goal is to help reduce the cycle of poverty through education. We have been a part of the CHSP process for 10 years or more. I've actually been a part of it for three years on this side, and we definitely want to maintain the integrity of the CHSP process, and I am also in support of UPHS providing some coordination between the CHSP and the funding agencies for the CHSP process. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Our next speaker?
Next speaker is Tim Center, also on 1308. He's going to wait until the time of the item, so we have Diana Bixler, also on 1308, and Mayor, that's the last speaker we have at this point there. A number of people on agenda items, but they will wait for the item.
Great. Ms. Bixler, thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you for having me. My name is Diana Bixler. My address is 2943 Huntington Drive, 32308. So I'm here on behalf of Capital Medical Society Foundation's charity program called We Care Network. I'm the program coordinator. So we provide specialty medical and dental care for the low-income uninsured residents in a four-county region, and we have been a CHSP partner for a number of years, as far back as I can see in reports, and we're greatly appreciative of that partnership. So I am here in support of our UPHS Executive Director, Amber Tynan, who is going to speak on the needs assessment that was completed by the Center for Health Equity. So from a perspective of an organization that underwent this needs assessment, I am in support of having one. I would appreciate more of the organization data analysis. So when we first were told about this needs assessment, we were told that you'll be interviewed, you'll be contacted, data will be collected, and I think there was maybe a one- or two-minute phone call, and then at the very, very end of the needs assessment, there were five questions that were sent out. Can you answer these really, really fast and respond? And so I did, to the best of my knowledge, and when we received the final copy that was passed out to everyone and published on this site, the data that was submitted, albeit very limited, was actually inaccurate. So the data in the final needs assessment, at least from my organization, I can't speak on behalf of other organizations, but it was inaccurate. So I reached out for those corrections to be made, but they were not made. So we are here in support of having a needs assessment, but having it done correctly, because in my personal organization, we fell victim to that with the United Way. They underwent the same thing, doing a needs assessment, reassessing where they wanted to fund, and healthcare unfortunately fell out of that. However, some of the data that they wanted to collect was data that we were unable to provide based on our own IT database. So the data that will potentially be collected in the second year of the new upcoming cycle would be something that we would need to know about in advance. It would be something that would be better not done in the middle of the award cycle that's already been awarded. And so, that being said, I'm just here in support of what Amber's going to speak on when the actual Item 13.08 comes later.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Clark, any other speakers at this point?
No, sir.
Is there anybody else that is here in the audience that did not get a chance to fill out a speaker card that would like to speak at this point? Just come to -- we're recording. If you just wouldn't mind coming to the podium real quick.
I intended to sign up for the early for 1308. Okay? Go ahead. Okay.
Please, your name and address for the record, please.
Got it. Jackie Malone, 6010 Rich Farm Road, Tallahassee 32317. I'm the Executive Director of Breon Family Services, have been for 20 years, and we have been very happy partners with the CHSP process, and I've been on the Board of UPHS and the leadership there over the years. And you will hear more specifics from Amber, the Executive Director of that group, soon when that item comes up, but I urge you to reject the CHSP Needs Assessment, some of the reasons were just given, and keep the current funding allocations and categories in place for the upcoming funding cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie, if you don't mind, too, just make sure we got the card for the --
I did have a card and have had it in the speaking agenda item, but we got it and we're ready to go.
Thank you. Sorry about the confusion. Anybody else here that has not had a chance to fill out a speaker card that'd like to speak? Great. We look forward to hearing you on the agenda items. We're on Item Number Eight, Appearances by Other Governmental Entities. Mr. City Manager, do we have any other messages?
No, sir, we do not.
Excellent. Is there anybody here? Seeing none. Moving forward, we're on the consent agenda. Have any consent agenda items been pulled?
No, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim has properly moved the consent agenda. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Bryant. All those in favor, signal five by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are on Item Number 11. Do we have any items under this part of the agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Excellent. We are on Item Number 12.01. Do we have any introduction of ordinances?
No, sir.
We are on Item Number 13.01, under Policy Formation and Direction. Mr. Cook, I believe this is yours.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Item 13.01 provides some revisions to City Commission Policy 238. That is your policy that provides guidance and structure for our debt management process. The item was created a number of years ago. It's been long enough that it was time for a sunset review. We've taken a look at that item, a couple of minor tweaks, but have no substantive changes to the item, so those small changes are presented for your approval and any questions you may have.
Excellent. Do we have any comment, any public comment on this item, any speakers?
We do not.
All right. We'll turn it -- is there anybody here that has not had a chance to fill out a card that would like to speak on 13.01? All right, seeing none, we'll go to Commissioner Comment. Seeing no comment, Mayor Pro Tim properly moves staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on 13.02, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. As I introduce this item, if I could invite our General Manager of Community Beautification and Waste Management, Reginald Fawney, and our Director of Financial Resources, Robert Wigan, to come forward to help me with this. But I'll set this up. This item involves recycling and our recycling processor. About a month ago, we did receive notice that our processor will no longer be able to continue in the business. This is predicated by a change in the global market for recyclables. Just a bit of background, you know, the city of Tallahassee, I know we're very proud of what we do in terms of sustainability and recycling. About three decades ago, we were one of the first states in the state of Florida to begin offering curbside collection. I think many of us probably can't remember a time when we didn't do that. And we've done a great job, it's second nature at this point. We've advanced greatly to the point where we have 64-gallon rollout containers that we don't even have to store it any longer, and they're simply picked up and taken to a processor. That processor then sorts them and makes them ready for wholesale market. And the different kinds of plastics, and the metals, and the papers, and the cardboard, they go to different places throughout the southeast. Historically, those goods were worth some amount of money that helped offset the cost of recycling. And over the last couple of years, that has changed greatly. It is a global issue, but it's affected a lot of cities around the country. And in fact, cities today and before today have started talking about what they do. And it's been mixed results, some communities have elected to move away from recycling. We've talked to our community a great deal, in fact, I brought this item before our Utility Citizens Advisory Committee last month and asked their opinion. And the first question is, you know, the posture of recycling, do we wish to continue to recycle? Well, of course, I thought I knew that answer, and I got a resounding yes, that we do. We want to find every way possible to recycle. And so we stand in that posture today with our recommendation, and it is this. We are asking that you authorize staff to negotiate a transition agreement with the existing processor for about a year, that would cover their costs, no more, to allow them to remain in business. And at the same time, authorize us to hire jointly a consultant with the county. They also use the recycling processor to identify what the long-term possibilities are, so that we can find a sustainable solution. And so that's our recommendation today. And Robert is here, he's our budget expert, and Reginald Fawney, he's our expert with the Waste Management Group. They can add any detail if you wish, but that's our recommendation tonight.
Mr. City Manager, what was the, remind me one more time, I'm sorry, the policy that was adopted last night at the County Commission meeting?
The county had a, what I'll call a companion item, but they're, they've received the same notice, they've asked for the same permission to negotiate a transition agreement, as well as to jointly hire a consultant. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for asking that. And they, and the County Commission did vote to move in that direction.
All right, so they've already taken positive action.
Yes, sir.
This, excellent, excellent. Mr. Cook, do we have any speakers on this item?
We do not.
All right, is there anybody here that's in the audience that has not had a chance to fill out a speaker card that'd like to speak on this item? All right, we'll turn it to Commissioner Discussion.
Move accept, so the recommendation.
Has been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by, well, Commissioner Bryant and Commissioner Matlow. Commissioner Matlow, you are recognized?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Mr. City Manager. I, we're all no strangers to how important recycling is to our community and just figuring out how to make this work. But also, as we move forward and look at strategies, think of how we can encourage also people to just reduce the waste they're using already and reuse existing products, because I think that goes into it, the idea is to eliminate waste altogether, right? So I think that should be at the forefront of our conversation moving forward.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that feedback, we'll certainly incorporate that.
Excellent, any further comment? It's motion on tape for staff recommendation, properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 13.03, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Cynthia Barber, our Deputy City Manager, Cynthia Barber is going to make the presentation, I'll set it up. She's joined by several of our colleagues, our Chief of Police is here, as well as Assistant City Manager Wayne Tetter, John Powell, Director of Facilities, and our spirit behind all of us, Dr. Campbell Thomas with Tempo. Of course, this is, impacts many operations, and our Fire Chief, Jerome Gaines, is here as well. It involves all of these individuals. And so quickly, just a matter of background for everybody, over the last year at your direction, we've engaged in a very rigorous process to identify, ultimately, the intent was to identify the future location of the Tallahassee Police Department Headquarters. We're at that point, I think we have an even better possibility, and Cynthia's going to share that with you. But in March, there was a call to the community for sites, we got a lot of sites. Cynthia probably will detail that, a lot of ideas from our community, we worked those down. And you recall, late last year, you shortlisted the sites down to two for consideration, deeper consideration. And we relied upon our technical experts to help us with that, as well as feedback from the community, for which there were two public meetings. And so it's been a journey, we've gotten a lot of information. I'm confident to say that because of that, I think we have a good opportunity, one that we probably would not have considered at the beginning of the year. And so with that, I'd like Cynthia to walk us through the recommendation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, and appointed officials. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I also wanted to recognize, we have members of our project team here as well, if you guys will wait. You know who's in the room, we have representatives from the architecture firm and the construction management firm. As the City Manager indicated, it's been a year. You told us that you wanted to hear more from the community, and wanted to make sure whatever recommendation we brought forth included feedback from the community. So we're proud today to report that that's what we've been doing. And I want to tell you some of the results of what we've, what we determined during that time. Back in October, we brought forth five recommended sites, which actually had dwindled down from 68 sites that actually came from the community. That was, that was one of the things you asked us for, you wanted to make sure whatever we did related to the public safety campus, that it included the city, the community's feedback. Of those sites, many of them, as you will recall, were not recommended by the owners. So after we contacted owners and we worked through the process and determined which sites were viable, we ended up with five sites. And during that October meeting, you narrowed that five to two sites. And there are two city-owned sites, the Lake Bradford wastewater treatment facility site, and then the Northwood Mall's, Northwood Mall site. And we also solicited more feedback through two meetings, we wanted to actually, we had received over 700 contacts via emails and other modes of contact. But we also held two community meetings, because we wanted the public to actually see the proposed ideas for the sites, hear what they wanted at the site, and we want to provide that feedback to you today. During those workshops, the citizen had an opportunity to not only hear that, but to meet directly with the architects and share their feedback. One of the things, as the manager indicated, as we got involved in the process, interest was, there was interest in doing a fire station. That was certainly not a part of what we started out with over a year and a half ago. But hearing from the community, they thought that a fire station in the Lake Bradford area would be a great addition to what we were looking to do. And in addition to that, the, during the fire services fee development process over almost five years ago, a need for a fire station in that area was identified. So that married very well to what the community was saying. We also heard the community say that they wanted to see other city-type services in the Lake Bradford area. So we had an opportunity to encompass that feedback in our assessment for the police headquarters. The, I want to tell you a little bit about the two sites and what we, what we heard from the public regarding those sites. But if you'll recall, the direction that you gave us was that you wanted a site that was within two-mile radius of the intersection of Monroe and Tennessee Street. The final sites are both in that area. The feedback we heard from the public, while they appreciate that they were both in that area, they found that the Northwood Mall site was more centrally located. It was interesting to me that I heard that feedback from people who are, who live closer to the Lake Bradford site, and really had some interest in seeing city services there, but recognizing that this was a community asset and that the other site was, they viewed to be more centrally located. One of the other things that was important to you is what else, what are the adjacencies of the sites that we were looking or considering? And particularly, what were the neighborhoods that surrounded the area? And the ability to not only serve those communities, but also to make sure we understood any potential impacts related to the sites. At the north, at the Lake Bradford site, you'll see that there are a number of neighborhoods, south-side neighborhoods, that are very historical and prominent neighborhoods in this community. But also, the sites located between Florida A and M University and Florida State University, and also along the extension for FAMU Way. This diagram is one of the examples of how the project could be laid out on the Lake Bradford site. One of the things we wanted to see is, because that is a, not only an oddly-shaped parcel, but it's also not as large as the, as the Northwood Mall parcel. So we wanted to actually see how it could be laid out on that parcel. So the blue sections are the police department and associated parking for law enforcement-related activities. Then on the, on the south end, the red area is the fire station. And for those who are familiar with that area, that would be just on the other side of the Spear Seafood Restaurant area, I mean, Seafood Market. The golden area is the area where we envisioned that we could have some of the municipal-type services. We've considered things like the Tempo Engagement Center there, the Resiliency or Code Enforcement area, as well as our Neighborhood Affairs areas, those areas that tend to deal more with the public, making them more accessible, as well as the area for the cop squad to be located at that, at the Lake Bradford site. The purple color is an area that was identified for a potential private investment on the Lake Bradford site. And as you can see, it took some work to get it all laid out, but it is all represented there, based on not only your vision, your strategic direction, but the feedback we received from the public. As an alternative, we thought if the, if this police station ended up being located at the Northwood Center site, how could we still address the interests of the, of the community? And actually, the feedback that we received from you about the fire station, how could this area be utilized to provide the municipal building and the fire services? And what you, what you'll notice here is that if the police station is not located there, it does provide for a lot more private development opportunity on that site. So it's all of the purple area, so it's no longer those two sections up top, but also the whole middle section where the police department was. And then we moved the municipal space down near the fire department, and we see the opportunity there for some shared community and training space at the fire department. So you could leverage that fire department space with the municipal, for support for the municipal services and community-related meetings, and neighborhood association meetings, and those kinds of things on that site. Okay, I just want to share briefly with you some of the kinds of general feedback we received at the two community meetings that we held. In particular, what, some of the things we heard were that they wanted more community services. Of course, they were interested in the fire station. Even if the police department itself was not located there, they were interested in some portion or some substation of some sort, some type of police presence at the location. Access site is a concern in terms of during peak periods, being able to access the police department came up as a concern for that site. There were other concerns that we certainly feel like we could address or mitigate, such as flooding. The one limitation that we would have without building somewhat of a fort for the police department is the inability to grow on that, on that, on that parcel. And what we didn't want to do is, we didn't want to create a police station that looks like an occupied force in the community. Then, of course, they thought it would improve the values, property values in the community. Then there was the idea of placing it, the police department someplace that's not absolutely more central, could indicate, give the impression of single community policing, and we certainly don't want to do that. And then, of course, the other thing was that depending on how the structure is built, and if it's a fortified structure, that it could provide some type of emergency shelter space if we're in a community crisis. Okay, this is the Northwood Mall site, and the mall is the dark shaded area. And one of the, one of the, again, the issues that we were looking at when we considered the sites were adjacency to neighborhoods and other services. The needs would be different based upon where the police department is placed. Here, while we heard more about recreational services at the Lake Bradford site, on the Northwood Mall site, where you are across the street from a school that offers gym facilities, also offer ball fields, you're down the street from a park, a city park, that offers that, offers park and recreational services, a pool. So we have different types of services in that area, but you also have the neighborhoods that are adjacent. And we would have to consider the impacts to those neighborhoods. And we have worked with the contractor on both sites to figure out how to mitigate those. It certainly would take a lot more work to, to address those issues. Similarly to the Lake Bradford site, this is a, like a bubble diagram of how the site could be designed if we were to use the Northwood Mall site. One of the things we heard is that that site would definitely address the, address the future growth. It could also spur development. And you'll notice, the way that this particular design is, it allows us to take advantage of the topography. If you're familiar with that site, it drops off at some point, and that, that's where the police department will allow you to place a lot of the assets that need to be more secured in an underground type of situation. You could do more floors and more stories there, but wouldn't give the appearance of being an overpowering building, because some of it would be under, under the ground. The one thing that is a highlight for this particular space is the green space in front of the police department. Not only does it allow us to address some of the type of security concerns that were raised related to the Lake Bradford site, with it having to be, with the building being located closer to the road. Here, you could create what could be a soft barrier to provide that type of protection. But also, this green space could be used to facilitate some of the community-type activities that the police department is interested in holding. They could sponsor food truck days, they could do activities for youth in that green space. It's just really limitless in terms of what you could do, but it certainly would go a long way in creating the type of casual interaction between law enforcement and the community. Some of the comments that we heard about that site is that it's centrally located and it's easy to access. The site is sufficient to accommodate the current and future needs. The headquarters promotes commercial growth. Noise and light pollution would still be a concern, we heard that from some, some people, that we need to make sure we take measures to minimize that, and that would be no matter which location. Extend the greenway, this would extend the greenway for travelers, for, for citizens, to Thorpe, to traverse to Thorpe. And then the, and also, the presence of a police department in the area. There were some who thought, no matter where it is, where it would be, again, would deter crime. And then, of course, the financial benefit to the city for being able to develop that site, which we know prior to designing the police department and finalizing that, we'd have to do a master planning of that entire parcel, so to make sure how, how the department, the police department would fit into the overall space. Those, again, are just some of the general types of needs. Of course, when we told citizens we want to hear everything that they had to offer and the kinds of things that they were interested in, we received just that. And it ranged from educational-type assets to recreational assets, and just basic improved space for the community to gather. This particular slide actually breaks down some of the, some of the pros and cons of the sites. This particular slide actually breaks down some of the, some of the pros and cons of the sites, and this is in conjunction with our, our architect and our partners, as well as the feedback from the community. So, the Lake Bradford site allows for the shared costs for fire and police, for some of the amenities that we would have there, and some of the required space, as well as the opportunity to, again, to contribute to a determinant in crime, then the, the private redevelopment opportunities. Although there's less space on the Lake Bradford site, there is space that could improve the overall presence of businesses, and you might have heard from a community leader this, this today, I think as a matter of fact, of a keen interest from the bond community about having that type of opportunity in the, in the bond community. Then, the kinds of issues we'd have to deal with would be the stormwater mitigation issues, traffic access, flooding concerns. The proximity to the railroads creates some accepted or safety concerns for a police department. If somebody had the, the will and the intent to do, to do evil, it could, the railroad creates a concern. Then, there's the, the stigma of being located more in one neighborhood rather than more central in our community that we would have to address. And we certainly not only do that with the design of the building, but with the programming and, and working to build a stronger relationship between law enforcement and the community. For the Northwood site, we've talked already about the central location, having ample space for growth, and also for the fact that the majority of the feedback we received was in support of that site. So, we saw that as a particular strength of the site. Then, the fact that we could build a more vertical building without having it be a towering building on that site was enticing to some citizens. And then, of course, the ability to spur economic development. And the location of the, to the parks and the schools was viewed as a, again, as a strength of the site. We'd have to, again, mitigate the residential, the impacts for residential, on a residential community. We have a construction site that's a very large site that would have to be demolished there, which has some, some implication of some, of, in terms of cost. We would have some deconstruction and, as well as on the Lake, as well on the Lake Bradford Okay, we've talked about those meetings, and I think many of you may have attended those meetings or received feedback from the meetings. Okay, so, what I like to do is, is, and I've covered the pros, the cons, and why we would, why we would make the recommendation that we would today, but according to, after the feedback from the public, the evaluation by our contractors, the feedback we received was that the construction cost on the two sites is relatively comparable for the North, although the Northwood site is preferable, mostly because of size and the ability to have more flexibility on the site. It also offers more egress and ingress options, which is a concern, making sure people can get in and out, and particularly, our, our patrol officers can get in and out of the site. Our recommendation would be to locate the fire station number 17 at the Lake Bradford site, coupled with the municipal structure to include city programs, including those I mentioned earlier today, to locate the police department at the Northwood Mall site. And we've, I've shared with you already why we believe that would be the best recommendation as it relates to the impervious area, which would be a savings for us, a topography of the two sites and the alternate modes. We've talked about those earlier. Okay, so, so we had the recommendations. I want to make sure I'm clear about what we're recommending today. We're recommending that you authorize us to move forward with a plan to develop the police headquarters at the Northwood Mall site, authorize us to conduct the appropriate spatial needs analysis and site planning, master planning necessary for the development of the fire department at the Lake Bradford site, as well as the municipal building. And I think that's it. Those are my recommendations.
Thank you.
That's recommendations.
Thank you, Deputy Manager. City Manager?
I think the Deputy City Manager did a good job. I believe she said that if the Northwood was selected, we'd also initiate a master plan. We're asking you for that guidance, too, because clearly, there's a lot of space still left to envision what that could be.
Excellent. So, before we get into questions and discussion, Mr., Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
You do not have any speakers on this item, Mayor. I will point out that you each received an email, but it was late this afternoon, in support of this location from June Vickers as the President of the Charter Oak and Delview Neighborhood Association. You want to be sure the City Commission had that information.
We have no speaker cards. Is there anyone here from the general public that would like to speak on this item that has not had a chance to fill out a card? I cannot believe we do not have a single speaker on this item. All right, I'm not, I'm, we're going to keep going.
That's what you call, that's what you call successful public engagement.
There we go. So, we'll turn it to Commissioner, questions and comment, and I'll kick it off by saying that I do support the staff recommendation, and I want to thank staff, and I want to thank the general public for getting involved with this issue. It has taken us a year to, see it, Tommy, tell Mom I said hi. It's taken us a year to get to this point. It's taken a lot of hard work. I do agree with the recommendation, and I do agree with moving forward. I do think, though, that this is a win-win, and I love to see the recommendation that we do move forward with the development of the Lake Bradford property as well. I think that you've only scratched the surface, actually, in the recommendations of what we can do. I would love to see a state-of-the-art fire station down there. I would love to see, I don't know exactly whether it's the, the headquarters of the Tempo program with some other type of community service program that we have, private development. We haven't even talked about housing yet. We've got a lot that we can do down on the Lake Bradford piece as well to totally expand it. My final question, and you don't even have to come, Chief Revel, I'm looking at you directly. Do you agree with the recommendation, just yes or no? Okay, we'll open it up for any comments, questions? Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too agree with the staff's recommendation at this point. I can tell you, I was an early proponent for a south side location, not only because of what that would do for addressing the crime issues in that community, and I think the concern of the overpolicing and targeting black males, of which I have been one for 63 years and have never been targeted by police, but that was a concern for the neighbors that I talked to that live on the south side of town, that we wanted that kind of presence, police presence in the community. But even more importantly, the economic impact that a development like that would have had for the south side of our community. And I talked earlier in our retreat about how glaring it is that development and revitalization is occurring all across this community, with the exception of, of areas on the south side of Tallahassee. And certainly, this would have been an opportunity for the city to invest in that kind of development and revitalization. I'm comfortable with the recommendation because of what it does do for that Lake Bradford Road site. In addition to what we would be getting in terms of the location of the police headquarters on the Northwood Center site, that we are still demonstrating a commitment on the part of this commission and staff to address development issues on the south side of Tallahassee. And I think that what we're proposing for the Lake Bradford Road site will, in fact, do that. I think there's, there would be a lot of potential once the community sees that there is an investment on the part of the city in that site, in that area of our community. I, I really believe that it will create interest in housing development, in commercial and economic job development in the area as well. And so, for that reason, Mr. Mayor and my colleagues on the commission, Mr. City Manager, I do support the staff recommendation.
Are you making a motion?
I would make the motion that we accept the staff recommendation.
Commissioner Richardson has properly moved the staff recommendation. I will second the motion. Keep moving with Commissioner Comment. Commissioner Bright?
Yes, only one thing to add. Let me, let me first commend the Deputy City Manager and our City Manager. We're sticking to the course. We had a plan, we had city, county, really, engagement, and whatever was asked of them, they actually went out and made it happen. So, I just want to first start by, by providing recommendations. And then, to add to that, and I was listening carefully when, in, in the presentation, you talked about the development of opportunity and opportunity area, I think it was purple. We've heard over and over again that we need to bring businesses to the south side. And I, I'm, my only challenge is that we, we provide a dedicated effort to invite businesses to become a part of the south side community and continue to expand our efforts to make that happen. And I, I think in conjunction with everything else planned for the site, that this is a golden opportunity. So, thank you again for your effort.
Excellent. Mayor Protem, then I'll come to Commissioner Matlow. Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, thank you. First off, exceptional job, Ms. Barber. As the mayor pointed out, this is a totally different meeting than what we had a year ago, and I don't think we can go anywhere in our community without people knowing that this is an ongoing conversation. So, you really done a great job of reaching, I think, everybody, so much so that we have neighborhood associations next to both sites that would really like to see it, see it come there. And I think that's a very great and nice place to be, so thank you. A couple of questions on Mr. City Manager. On the Northwood site, we're talking about master planning the entire site where private redevelopment would go as well?
Yes, sir, that's what we're asking.
Okay. And on the Lake Bradford site, are, are we doing a similar process for the entire site, or are we just doing the fire station and service center?
We're using a different term. I think it's the same outcome. What you saw Deputy City Manager Barber show us were conceptual layouts. So, in the development and planning, which we're asking for permission to do tonight, it would come up with that, and, and to, to connect with what Commissioner Bryant has said, it would lay out those opportunities where the public space would be, where the fire department would be, other facilities, and then make available other uses of private type uses.
Okay. And I, I agree, I would encourage us, as we make these public investments, to see how we can think bigger and really think, bring something that's going to be a game changer for the area, whether that's a grocery store, a childcare facility, or just really reach out to the neighborhoods and see what that greatest needs is. And I know we have money in the capital improvement plan for a police station and a fire station, but I think we're going to need a little bit more money as we start developing this area. So, I would, if I can make a friendly amendment to identify additional funding sources and how we can fund redevelopment in that area, either by upcoming property sales we're already going to make, looking at our budget year this year, or, or looking at potential to sell off other properties, so we can really put a significant investment on Lake Bradford and really create parity with the two developments.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Matlow. Dyes for lack of second. Okay, Commissioner Matlow, you still have the floor.
With that, I'll, I'll support the Northwood location.
Madam, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for your comment. Let me first of all thank the citizens of, the residents of the city of Tallahassee, because you did this. You came together. When we came to this commission, we were, you know, we were all over the place, and we asked for more public engagement, and that's what we got. And we took our time, and we did it right. So, thank you for those of you who engaged, and those of you who did not engage. We hope that you will enjoy, enjoy, will join us in future engagements, because these are your tax dollars at work. This is our city, and we have to work together to make sure that it is the best city it can be as we speed towards our bicentennial. It's even more important that we come closer to working together to make sure that we have something that we all be very proud of when we turn, before we turn 200 years old, but definitely when we pass the mantle to the next generation. I also want to thank the City Manager, the Deputy City Manager, and all the support staff that went to all the meetings, took all the verbal abuse, and took all of the, all the questions from us. You did it. You, you, you are resilient. Where's, where's a better, that's our word. You all are resilient, and you do a very, very good professional job. We want to thank you, thank the leadership, and I want to thank my colleagues as well for staying the course, getting it done. Thank our city attorney for keeping us out of trouble, and Jim for counting the money, because we got to pay for this. And so, I just want to say thank you. This is what happens when we have successful community engagement, and I look forward to doing this even more. I love doing this, and I love it when we come together. As the A-team, as the, the A-team used to say, I love it when a plan comes together. I support the motion that has been made.
In closing, I am also very proud of this process. And colleagues, pleasure working with you on this issue. Without any further comment, Commissioner Richardson has made the motion for staff recommendations, seconded by the mayor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes unanimously, five to zero. We are on item number 13.04, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir, Mayor and Commissioners. As, as we move to this next item, I'm going to ask Wayne, our Assistant City Manager, Wayne Tetter, and our Director of Aviation, David Pollard, to, to come forward on this item, and I'll set it up. This involves a recommendation to change the structure of the Airport Advisory Committee. It is one, it is a, an advisory committee to the mayor and commissioners. In the current structure, it involves 18 members, many of those are directly attached to a particular sector or a particular area, geographical area. As we come to the end of the sunset review period for this advisory committee, staff has looked, David and, and our Assistant City Manager, they've looked creatively to find a way to make sure that the advisory committee is, in fact, doing what you want it to do. Not necessarily be an advisory committee to staff, but to be a policy advisory committee to the elected body here. And so, as they work through it, the recommendation is to reduce, and Wayne will go into more detail, but I'll give a general idea, reduce the size of the committee to make it more nimble, and take some of the restrictions off as it relates to assigning particular seats. And the committee ultimately would be, if approved, nine members, as opposed to the 18 today. We think that creates some nimbleness. But, of course, we believe it would be appropriate to have leaders from the aviation sector, the business sector, the finance sector, those with expertise that we think can lend itself to the committee. And finally, as you know, one of you, in this case, is the mayor, is a liaison to the airport, pledging that priority connection from this elected body. And to have a role for that liaison, the recommendation is that that member serve as the chair, a non-voting member at the advisory committee. So, the recommendations and direction and thoughts of the advisory committee can be brought back to this commission and shared for consideration, again, a non-voting member. That thought is not unlike some of the roles that you serve in other capacities, whether it be the DIA, or the Special Events Advisory Council, or CRTPA even, there's, there's, there's certainly a role that you play outside of your role as the city commissioners. And also, we drew upon some experience that we had in the past with our target issue committees. It was something that commissions of the past had done, where there were a couple commissioners assigned to particular service areas, to particular target issues, and there was a chairman of that committee. But the way it essentially worked was to take the feedback and bring it back to the full body. So, we took all of that into consideration to come up with a creative solution to make this recommendation. I probably have done to Assistant City Manager Tetter what I normally do to Deputy City Manager Barber, but I think I may have stepped all over him. But Wayne, do you have any more that we can add to that? I wanted to make sure we give a good amount of detail, because it's an important decision, and we certainly are looking for a lot from our advisory committee to give guidance to this body.
Yes, sir, Mr. City Manager. I think what I would add to what you indicated is very clearly articulate for the folks who are listening to this, the new focus of this commission and the priorities that we are to generate an economic impact of the airport. Currently, it's $600 million a year. We want to make it $1 billion a year by 2024. That is a very bold goal. That is a very bold goal. And how are we going to do that? We're going to focus in three areas. Number one, we're going to increase passenger traffic to 1 million passengers per year. Number two is to increase cargo from 19 million pounds to 22 million pounds. And then lastly, we have over 435 acres of developable land out there. Our goal is to lease 100 acres of that land and create, stimulate economic activities through our community. The work that David is doing with the international designation and arrivals facilities, the runways, and on all of that, it's going to come together, and it's going to take a strategy that is much different than what we focused on in the past. So this is an opportunity for you to realign the committee, to focus on your priorities, and then for us to go back and implement those priorities according to your plan. And so with that, I would be remiss without thinking the members, I think we do have two members here in the audience, I would just like for them to stand and show appreciation for the work that they have done up to this point.
With that, City Manager, I have no other information.
Very good, thank you.
Ms. Clark, we got, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Manager.
Just to be clear, so our recommendation is to revise the committee to a structure of nine. The liaison appointed by the commission would serve as a non-voting chair, and we believe that would take a couple of months to put that in place as we transition and you appoint new members.
Ms. Clark, do we have any speakers on this item?
We have one speaker on this item, Carrie Post.
Ms. Post, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Carrie Post, 315 South Calhoun Street. And as you all are aware, I serve as Director of the Leon County Division of Tourism, otherwise known as Visit Tallahassee. And I would like to share my support for the item, for 13.04, for the Airport Advisory Committee Sunset Review and Bylaws Amendment. I currently serve as the Vice Chair of the Airport Advisory Committee, and I have for a couple of years. And it has been very difficult, especially in recent years, to conduct the business of the committee due to frequent lack of a quorum. Returning the committee to the original nine-member structure as opposed to the 18 members with targeted membership that is aligned with the city's new strategic plan will ensure that the Airport Advisory Committee is more focused on effectiveness and supporting the bold goal of achieving the airport's annual economic impact of $1 billion by 2024. So further, I understand that Mayor and Commissioners, you all will have many important interests to balance when considering appointments to the committee. So I want you to be assured that Visit Tallahassee, the Leon County Division of Tourism, will continue providing marketing support for the airport, continue providing, to partner with David Pollard and his great team to promote increased air travel regardless of a seat on the committee or not. We are committed to the growth of the airport. So lastly, I want to say also that we totally support the objective to increase total passenger traffic at the airport to 1 million visitors by 2024, and we're certainly going to do our part to help achieve that goal. So thank you for the opportunity to provide comment. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Clark, do we have any other speakers?
We have no other speakers on this item.
Opening it up to Commission discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
I move the acceptance of the staff recommendation.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any further comment? Commissioner Richardson?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor, and that is concerning the commission liaison.
Right.
I know in the past, that person has pretty much been self-selected because they expressed an interest in serving. I would like to see us develop a process, a more structured process and definite process for that liaison from the commission, and maybe some manner of rotating, maybe between the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem to serve in that capacity.
Here's my concern. If we do it for one, we need to do it for all, whether it be the Downtown Improvement Authority, whether it's the Tourist Development Council. And the question that we have to ask is, are we hindering our ability to move forward without having the continuity? That's something to think about. You know, it's taken me a year just to get my feet underneath me, probably much the same with the other committees that we serve on. If we do do this, I would suggest instead of an annual rotation.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not suggesting that.
You know, let's keep that in mind as we move forward.
Yeah. No, I wouldn't suggest an annual, but maybe a two-year service as chairman, and then it would rotate to the Mayor Pro Tem for two years. But certainly, you need that kind of consistency and stability, at least a two-year term is liaison to that. But an indefinite, I'm not sure I quite agree with that either.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow, and then we'll come back to the Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, thank you. First off, thank you to Carrie and Allen for showing up. We desperately need that from our airport advisory members. First, I think, I think we need to make sure we're comparing apples to apples here. As we know, DIA, CRTPA, those are independent bodies. They're not advisory boards to this body. And we have many advisory boards. We have Utility Advisory Board, and we'll have a new Police Advisory Board. We have the CACs that advise, the CRA. So I wonder, are we entering a policy area where we want to look at all of our boards and have a commissioner actually chair each one? My concern there is we may be going down a path where we really want the citizens' impact without maybe, you know, myself there influencing, you know, that type of decision, and really have that opinion be separate from our opinion. I think that's part of the reason we have advisory boards to get citizens' advice, and then we mesh that with our personal opinions. But I do think, as we're looking at exchanging the airport board that can specifically make recommendations to the strategic plan, we've had this conversation. We've had this conversation about poverty, and it was decided that, no, we didn't want to have another body making recommendations of this board and pushing our strategic plan. So, you know, my contention is, if we are going to open up that conversation, I'm happy to have it. I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea, but we do need to have equality in different programs that we're pushing for. So I cannot support this as a standalone. I could support it going forward if we paired it with somewhat a citizens' committee focused on poverty. I would nominate Madam Mayor Pro Tem to be the chair of that committee and really focus on different ways we can do the same thing. We want to improve the airport, but we also want to improve poverty. So how can we get citizens involved that can make recommendations to the strategic plan in the same way? If we're going down, this is totally new. We've never had a member of our body actually serve on an advisory committee. So if we're going to do it, I don't think it should be in a silo to just the airport. Thank you.
Sure. And Mayor Pro Tem, you're right with us.
I was just going to mention that with Commissioner Richardson and your suggestion that it rotate between the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem for a two-year period, remember, Mayor Pro Tem is an annual renewal. So it wouldn't, Mayor Pro Tem would not serve for two years. You'd have the annual. So I'm, you know, I'm open to what we do in the future, but for tonight, I stand by my motion to move forward with the recommendation.
Seeing no further comment. Motion on the table is for staff recommendation made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Richardson in dissent. All right, our next item is item number 13.05.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This item involves the nearing the conclusion of our pilot program for what we have referred to as our micro-mobility program, but affectionately known as scooters.
Scooter view.
It wouldn't be a city commission meeting if we didn't talk about scooters.
Scooter view.
We're going to round it out tonight. As we have neared the end of the six-month pilot period, we, of course, have gathered considerable experience. I think we've learned a lot. We've made a lot of adjustments during the course of events, and we are now at the period where staff is recommending the permanency to the program. That has some structure to it. We've had an opportunity to evaluate what we believe to be the market potential. There's been five, or different participants, I believe we have five at this point, that we've tested with about 1,000 devices out on the street, and we've learned a lot. So we're at the point of recommending a structured program. If you'll bear with me, I'm going to read the recommendations to make sure we're clear in the steps that we believe are necessary. We're seeking and asking you to direct staff to release an RFQ to procure vendors to participate in a shared micro-mobility program and extend the pilot project until such time as permanent vendors are chosen, or April 22 of this year, whichever is sooner. Also, we're asking you to direct staff to bring back an introduction of ordinance to adopt a permanent micro-mobility program on March 11 of this year instead of public hearing on March 25 of this year. That gives us the structure we need to make sure that we keep the rules in place and that we're able to move forward with scooters in our community.
Sounds great. Ms. Clark, do we have any speakers on this item?
We do not.
Is there anybody here from the general public that wishes to speak on this item that hasn't had a chance to fill out a card? All right, seeing none, let's open it up for Commission discussion.
I'd move staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Staff recommendation, and that is option number one and option number two, correct?
Yes.
Absolutely. It's been made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five to zero. 13.06, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this item involves our Star Metro system, and as I set it up, I've asked Angela Baldwin, our Transit Director, she's coming to join me. She's going to just give a brief overview of this one. But this one involves the addition of fare boxes, something that we've needed a long time. We have several million rides on our Star Metro system. It's important that we count those accurately, to make sure that we plan our system accurately, and also to make sure that we get our fair share of funding from the federal government. Transit systems do get a stream of revenue from the federal government. It's important to make sure you know who your riders are and that you count them. So this is something we've been anxiously awaiting. Angela and her team have done a good job getting us to this point, and I wanted her to share with you where we are now.
Thanks for joining us.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager Appointed Officials. I'll be brief. As the manager stated today, we are requesting approval to negotiate and award a contract to the recommended vendor, Gen Fare, for the purchase and installation of new fare boxes on our city buses. Combined with the new mobile fare app that you approved on consent, Star Metro is working to make all of our customer-facing technology and hardware tools more accessible and reliable. The new fare boxes does not just make the backend process of data reconciliation and reporting easier and more reliable, it makes the front-end user interface match the expectations that our citizens have of all of our city services. Star Metro is working to join all of our transit and city services to run safe, efficiently, up-to-date technology and processes that further enhance our commitment to seamless customer service. The new fare boxes will address a past audit where items brought to our attention were not unexpected results, and our team was already beginning to look at ways to enhance our processes and policies as well as our technology and infrastructure. As such, an outside consultant assisted with coordinating all of our needs, expectations, limitations, and offerings, and conducting the most comprehensive RFP process to date. It included our technology, our maintenance, our projects, and finance teams, all working together to address the concerns in the audit and strengthen the final product recommended here today. Combined with the mobile fare app, this new fare box opens a world of opportunities, as you can see outlined in the list, for the front-end customer interactions and the backend and data collection. Better data means better information for the state and federal agencies as we apply for grants and other funding sources. Our coach operators are also looking forward to reliable equipment with less jams and other complications that slow down the onboarding process, which impacts the customer experience and on-time performance. Your approval of this item will be another step towards Star Metro's growth and contribution to the success of the city's strategic initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, closing.
Mr. Mayor, so we're asking you to authorize staff to negotiate and award a contract to Gen Fare for the purchase and installation of the new fare boxes for Star Metro.
Great. Ms. Clark, any speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, anybody here that has not had a chance to fill out a speaker card that'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to Commissioner's discussion.
We'll accept this.
Properly moved staff recommendation by the Mayor Pro Tem, thank you very much, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five to zero. We are on 13.07, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. This item is complimentary. It could have been on our consent agenda, but I wanted to pair it with the discussion you just had because it fits into the progress we're making with our Star Metro system. And we're seeking approval to accept a $250,000 grant from the Capital Regional Transportation Planning Agency, the CRTPA, to perform a comprehensive operational analysis. This allows us to look at our system to make sure it's meeting the needs of our riders, it's going where it needs to go, and it's operating efficiently. And we're asking your permission to accept this grant.
Can I be clear that you're saying if someone wants to give us some money and we just need to say we want it?
Yes, ma'am.
So move.
Yeah. Is there any, Ms. Clark, is anybody here that wants to argue against us accepting a federal grant?
Not that I can see.
Okay. Anybody here want to speak on this item by chance that hasn't had a chance to fill out a card? Want to give everybody the opportunity to speak. All right, seeing none, I'll go back to the Mayor Pro Tem that is recommending staff recommendation.
Move acceptance.
Thank you very much, with Commissioner Bryant, Commissioner Richardson seconding it. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five to zero. Wonderful job. We're on number 13.08, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Before I go into this item, I just want to take a moment, and we could do more at the end of the meeting if it's appropriate, but I don't want to miss this opportunity, Mayor Commissioners. This is, and I'm going to embarrass you for a minute, Michael, I know you would rather not have the attention. This is Michael Parker's very last city commission meeting.
Oh.
And... I know we've had our time to say goodbye and recognize him and say so many good words about him, and I think it never will be enough. Michael has worked with us and served our community for 23 years, doing this and many other things. And so what an appropriate time to talk about this. And so I don't want to belabor that, but I don't want to miss the opportunity. Michael, I certainly appreciate, and I think I speak for everybody, we appreciate what you've done in making our city a better place. And it's never easy, we know that. Even this item, we know, it's a journey. And so with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for indulging me with that comment. I'm going to ask Michael, this item is a companion item. It involves our needs assessment report, and you heard some from speakers earlier about this. And we are paired with the county because we participate, we're the founders of the CHSP process many, many years ago, and so we worked jointly on this. The county commission considered this same item last night and took some action. And so I think it's necessary for you to know what they did because I think it impacts what you might do tonight as part of that. I'm going to ask Michael to do that for us and provide us a little background. So with that, Michael, will you give us some background on the item and then give clarity in terms of what the county commission did and how that sets the city commission up tonight?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to. So briefly, the background for this particular action goes back to 2017 when the United Way announced that they were going to leave the CHSP process. It precipitated the city and the county developing an MOU, which we kind of recommitted ourselves to continuing the CHSP process. And as part of that MOU was also a commitment to look at the existing categories of needs that are in the CHSP process, do a needs assessment, and determine whether there was any needs for adjustments for that. So in 2018, the city and the county collectively developed a, went out for a request for qualifications. We had three respondents. We selected the Center for Health Equity to conduct the needs assessment, and the needs assessment report was produced in October of this year. And then in December of this year, the report was presented to a mixture of the agencies and citizen volunteers for comment. Briefly, the recommendations that came out of the Center for Health Equity Report involved the creation of, or the reordering of some of the categories of needs, specifically the most significant was creating a new category of funding to fundamental health, transitional housing and homelessness, and job creation, and resulting also in the realignment of the allocation of funding between the existing categories and those new categories. It also suggested that we expand the boundaries of the promise zone category to include additional low, extremely low-income census tract, which would have taken the number of census tract, total number of census tracts to 18. And that, in reference to the map that was in your agenda, and that was a modification that you received today. The third was is to make recommendations on some outcome measures that would be utilized to evaluate the performance of agencies. There was also... There was also a recommendation regarding the frequency with which the needs assessment should be conducted. At that, as those recommendations were presented, there were a number of questions that came from the agencies and the volunteers regarding the recommendations, specifically those involving the new creation, the new categories of need, and the resulting recalculation of distribution of funds between categories. As a result of those, we asked, we had a review, a peer review, by the Askew School of Public Policy on the methodology that was employed. The conclusion of that was is that while the process that they followed was, followed a recognized approach as far as gathering information, they did note that there were deficiencies in the sample survey size and the methodology that was used to recommend the reallocation of funds. So the city and the county staff, taking that information, jointly developed actions, which was part of a series of recommendations and options which are part of your agenda item. Last night, the county commission took those options and they essentially adopted options number one, two, and three, which would be the options that we presented, and it essentially does this. One, it continues the existing allocation of funding from, and funding categories that are currently in the CHSP, and I believe some of the, that would satisfy some of the comments that were made earlier at the meeting about concerns about reallocating the funds. Secondly, it would be the expansion of the promise zone to include the additional low-income census tracts for a total which are represented on that map, with the condition that the county would also add additional funding because they have not historically participated in the funding for that. And then the third item that is part of the recommendation that would coincide with what the county operated, recommended was that we would take the outcome measures that were originally represented, recommended in the needs assessment, we would meet with the agencies and the service providers and to refine those and make sure that they would work with our existing service providers, and then implement those in the second year, second year of contract funding, which would be the 21, 22 funding cycle. So those are, that's the staff recommendations that are options one, two, and three, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, I appreciate it. Any questions real quick from Mr. Parker before we get into comments from citizens? All right, we've got six cards, I believe?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clerk, all right, let's hear from the public. And if anybody cares to speak on this item, please fill out a card and turn it in, we'll make sure you are heard.
First speaker is Tim Center, followed by Jocelyn Flagler.
Mr. Center, good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thanks, Tim Center. I'm at 309 Office Plaza Drive, I'm the CEO of the Capitol Area Community Action Agency, and to Michael, for him leaving, I hope it wasn't anything that I said. Great service, by the way, for Michael, and fantastic job, I think, of presenting to you some options regarding the community needs assessment, but I got to tell you, it's putting lipstick on a pig, and I would suggest that you reject the pig. Very quickly and very directly, at this point, the issue of 20 years of commitment that you have had to CHSP certainly says it's now time to probably revise and take a look again at the allocation methodology, but the community needs assessment that was put together by the group that did the work, I think, is entirely inadequate, as indicated by the letter that you got from the Askew Institute and the folks at Florida State University, and in fact, they offer up to you the chance to probably revisit how that process was done, and so I would suggest you move away from this. And that's a lot to say because you guys have been working on this for the last year or so, but there's a lot of inadequacies about that, and you heard about some of those earlier. I'm encouraged by the progress that you're trying to make, I'm encouraged by their continued commitment to the low-income families that we continue to serve through our region, but I encourage you again, I think, go in a different direction. I encourage you to think differently. Thanks.
Mr. Center, thank you. Let me make sure I understand what your position is. Are you, last night, the county took action on what would be considered option one, two, and three, that is being recommended to us. Are you in favor of the action that the county took or no?
No, and I encouraged them yesterday also to reject, exactly the same thing, and go back to the drawing board. You don't need to make any changes right now, you're about to go back out to procure new grant applications, which is great, and I would continue to do that, but I think you've got a chance to revisit the entire process, especially with the help of FSU offering up after they evaluated the process that was taken, they found the inadequacies, you've heard the inadequacies from other providers, you'll hear those later as well, and I think it's just time to reboot.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next is Jocelyn Flagler, she'll be followed by Michelle Gomez.
Hello, Jocelyn Flagler, 2518 West Tennessee Street, 32304. Many of you know me as Josie, I am the president and CEO of Elder Care Services. I stand before you today also representing Debbie Maroney from the Alzheimer's Project and Lisa Brett from Advantage Aging Solutions. Together, the three of us represent the three nonprofit agencies taking care of our agency's seniors. I had a prop today, I left it back there, but just to put in front of us that our population is aging, Florida's population is aging, Leon County and Tallahassee's population is aging. The process that we went through with the CHSP needs assessment had many problems. One was that they added in disability agencies into the aging category and then cut our funding. I cannot do what I do all day with having less funding, I'm already at a breaking point in many ways. We have Meals on Wheels, we do in-home services, we keep seniors active through volunteering, and right now, every time that our funding gets slashed locally, I can't pull down federal dollars. That goes for Alzheimer's Project, that goes for Advantage Aging Solutions as well. We ask that you reject the CHSP needs assessment because of the flaws that were involved in that study, and we look at the recommendation from the county for the promise zone, that if that is expanded, we are in favor of that, but there would have to be additional funding added into that pot, not coming out of what is from the city and the county currently. The peer review, however, we found was well thought out and presented, and then we just want to let you know that we are behind that. The promise zone serves a lot of our clients, and that is a lot of where our most vulnerable seniors are, and so as long as there is additional funding to perhaps expand that promise zone, we would be behind that. Thank you for your time.
Judge, let me make sure that I understand correctly. Because this is a very detailed recommendation.
Absolutely.
Of what's being presented to us.
Yes.
What is your recommendation?
The recommendation is that the CHSP needs assessment not be counted as valid. One example, I don't know if you delved into it, I use statistics from the Office of Economic Vitality when I'm writing grants to the federal government or to the state. There's 46% growth in our population for people 65 to 79. There's 18% growth for people 80 and older coming to Tallahassee and/or aging in place. We are the, that is the fastest-growing segment of our population. They use statistics that did not reflect that, they did not use local statistics. They also sent out surveys, there was only a 65 return rate. We're going to have the biggest decision in funding for nonprofits come from 65 people, that to me is absurd. So again, we say please reject the CHSP needs assessment, the peer review was well thought out and presented, the promise zone expansion, we would also be behind if there was additional money.
So in regards to what's before the city commission, you are saying option number one, which is to maintain the funding cycle?
Yes.
Option number two, which is to the expansion of the promise zones, as long as the county is putting in new money and not taking out of the original pot. If I'm understanding correctly, you're looking at option number four, which is for the manager and the administrator to schedule a five-year cycle needs assessment, or is that part of what's being considered? I look forward to hearing more speakers as well. And then number five, which is bringing in the Askew School of Public Policy to develop additional analysis and recommendations?
Yes, all of those. I'm not against giving you whatever data you need. Obviously, you see, I'm very data-driven in what I do. I just wanted to keep at the forefront that seniors are part of that equation, and I believe Amber is going to speak more to the detail of that, too.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand what I'm hearing and how it lines up, that that would be option number one, option number two, and option number five is what you are recommending.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Michelle Gomez, followed by Kelly Adi.
Michelle, thanks for joining us.
Good evening. Michelle Gomez, 317 East Call Street, I'm the Executive Director of the Oasis Center for Women and Girls. We are a UPHS member agency, delivering programs to improve the lives of women and girls for 12 years, and those programs have been funded by the CHSP process for more than five years. Those programs include social-emotional learning for girls, elementary through high school, that promotes not only self-confidence and resiliency, but also academic performance and collaborative behavior. Also, group therapy and support system development for single moms, and as you know, more than 60% of the families in our most economically disadvantaged neighborhoods are headed by single women. The need is great, and your support of the agencies addressing this need through the CHSP process is critical. I wanted to provide some context as you consider the options before you. Delivery of these critical programs requires relationships and planning that doesn't necessarily fit within the October-September window. For instance, we plan in April for our student support groups that start in August and run through December. While we support rigorous and standard measures to evaluate services, changes mid-cycle would significantly burden the small agencies doing this big work. We encourage you to reject the suggestion to do so. As an agency delivering services in the promise zone, we do support the funded expansion of the promise zone, as we know the conditions that define it exist beyond its boundaries. Lastly, it is notable that experts on the ground take considerable issue with some components of the contracted needs assessment, as do local academic experts, and so we encourage you to let the 2020-2021 cycle proceed and take that time to address the experts' concerns and do it right on behalf of the residents of this city. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And again, for clarification, that would be option one, option two, and option five, I'm assuming.
Correct.
Okay. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Kelly Adi, followed by Amber Tynan.
Kelly, thanks for joining us.
Hi, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for letting me be here. I'm actually here to speak too on behalf of CHSP, I'm Kelly Adi, I'm the Executive Director of Pay Center for Girls, which is located at 311 East Jennings Street. So you know, I've been around for a long time, I've been here since before there was CHSP. I think the biggest issue and concern that I have is that we're trying to do a popcorn approach to the issues with funding, the community and human services. It's something pops up and then we try to address it. I do appreciate that the issues are complicated, I think the needs assessment, the goal was to try and be able to be very scientific and look at the needs. I don't think that's what you ended up with, the study was flawed, people didn't get the input that they needed, they based their recommendations on a handful of people when thousands of people are impacted by the service. I think that what we really have to do in order to be able to deal with this, is a really complicated issue, is to slow down. And one of the things that I heard you all talking about when you were talking about the police station was how much you all appreciated how thoughtful and slowly things were done, and what I'd really like everybody to do is just slow down and let's take a look at CHSP overall. The entire program needs to be looked at. United Way pulled out, we all reacted. It's 20 years old, the program really does need to be looked at, and the needs need to be looked at. Poverty is increasing in our community, it's not just in the promise zones, it's in the entire community and a lot of those areas, and we need to know how to be able to handle that, but we need to be able to do it really thoughtfully. The other thing is, I really want to encourage us all to get back to what we had for many years, which was there was a community-led group that actually looked at CHSP and the Human Service Needs Assessment and the Human Service Needs in our community, it was disbanded many years ago. I find it interesting that trees have a community committee, bicycles have a community committee, the Animal Services Center has a human, has a committee, but we have to have a UPHS knocking at everybody's doors to listen to the human needs in this community. We really do need to slow down and figure out how to have the maximum amount of input. Last night at the county was the second time in my 23-year history of working in local human services where a local funding partner adopted a significant change in spite of what the experts and the human service agencies were telling them that we needed for the people that we serve. Please don't be the third. We need to slow down and take a look at it, but from a much bigger perspective.
Who was the first?
United Way. The second was the county. So to be really clear, though, I'm not against the promise zones, I just want to be able to do it community-wide and take a look at all the areas. I really am in support of conducting a complete review of CHSP in addition to relooking at the outcome measures that the needs assessment recommended.
So let me make sure I got this straight, Ms. Adi, you are advocating for option number one, which is maintaining the funding cycle?
Yes, until we can get it right.
And option number five, which is engaging the Askew School to kind of...
Absolutely. That was an incredible offer that they made, and then I am adding one of my own, which is that we've got to put the CHSP Community Advisory Committee back together and put the agencies at the table with all of you, talking about what's in the best interest of our community.
Got it, thank you. Our next speaker?
Next is Amber Tynan, followed by our last speaker, for whom I have a card, Kim Sineth.
Great, thank you, thanks for joining us.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Amber Tynan, 2477 Tim Gamble Place. There's a lot at stake here, so I am going to make sure that I stick to my notes so that we can make sure we cover as much ground as possible, but thank you, Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager Appointed Officials, for the opportunity to not only speak with you, but meet with you over the last couple of months as it relates to our concerns with the needs assessment. I represent United Partners for Human Services, we are a membership organization that has had a longstanding collaborative partnership with not only the city but the county to help maintain the integrity of CHSP, but to also help our agencies build their capacity and help demonstrate their program effectiveness in our community. You've heard from a number of our members, but for those that aren't planning to speak, if you would just please stand, because I know that there's a number of you here, that would be great. We would be remiss if we didn't take the opportunity to not only thank you as the elected body, but the staff for your commitment and your support and your partnership to supporting human services over the last 20-plus years. And we also acknowledge that over that time, it's essential and it's critical that we reevaluate how that funding is allocated, as is public resources, to make sure that that is being spent in the most prudent way possible. However, given the recent work product that was delivered by the Center for Health Equity, we agree with Dr. Van Landingham at FSU that the CHSP needs assessment should be rejected. We know that this process was not easy, but we all felt that it was essential, but this report made it clear that there is a need for greater coordination, not only among the local funders, but our partners here with CHSP and our service providers. To implement any of the recommendations that were within that report would do a tremendous disservice to the entire human service ecosystem. While we had data, it did not have analysis tied to it to really allow us to hone in on what the true priorities are and how we would address them. Our members wholeheartedly believe that greater coordination is critical and will help funders better allocate and more effectively maximize the limited resources that we have, and we believe our human services sector is uniquely positioned as the experts to help drive this conversation and really narrow down what our scope and focus should be. Regarding the two options that the county adopted last night, the first in particular to expanding the promise zone, we do support that, but with the guarantee that that brings additional funding. Last night, it was approved that it would have that expansion, but that staff would come back with what that number would be. But unfortunately, it's still going to limit the maximum effort and program offered, as well as it's going to potentially put a strain on the capacity of those agencies providing services in that promise zone area as it stands. Related to option three, which would, it's near impossible to understand how we would change or refine outcome measures in year two of the next upcoming funding cycle in the next two weeks, which it should anticipate rolling out, without preparation and the tools to support the accurate evaluation of outcomes for the organizations that are funded. Further, most agencies currently funded have mandated outcomes that are outlined by state and federal contracts that would have to co-align with the changes made at a local level, so we would want to emphasize that as well if you did take up that item like the county did last night.
Amber, if I could get you to wrap it up?
Absolutely. We support the FSU Askew School to conduct the work group alongside our stakeholders and our service agencies, and again, just appreciate your support of the process in the past and moving forward.
All right, again, make sure I understand your position. Option number one, number two, and number five is what you're advocating for. Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Last speaker I have, Mayor, is Kim Sineth.
Kim, thanks for joining us, appreciate it. Name and address, please.
Kim Sineth, I am at 3519 Easter Stanley Court. Thank you for your time tonight and the opportunity to speak on this item. I'm the Executive Director of the Learning Pavilion, formerly the Dick Hauser Center for Childhood Services. We have received funding from CHSP since its inception. I thank the city for its longtime commitment to the process and the staff that worked to implement it. The Learning Pavilion is also a longtime member of UPHS, I serve on the board, and I just want to echo the thoughts of my peers, and I cannot believe we are already at the end of January. But the next process, the application... But the next process, the application's right around the corner, so do please consider keeping the funding stable through the contract term to avoid disruption in services and operations while changes to the process are considered. I believe that we're all passionate in our efforts to impact change cost-effectively, and I agree that a needs assessment and evaluation of outcome measures is a necessary part of any funding process such as CHSP. But additionally, there is a responsibility to ensure that the data being used to shape the process is accurate and reliable, and that the implementation is feasible. So, I want to emphasize my support of the comments made on behalf of UPHS by Amber Tynan, the Executive Director. So, that's options one, two, and five. And thank you again for your time this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Clerk?
No further speakers.
Great. Do we have anybody else here from the public that has not had a chance to fill out a card that would like to speak on this item? Please, come forward. And if you'll just give us your name and address for the record, and then make sure you fill out the card for the record, that'd be great.
Kim Galban Countryman, 3071 Highland Oaks Terrace. I'm the CEO of Lighthouse of the Big Bend, LBB. We serve people who are blind and visually impaired. I did fill out a card, because, you know, a lot of my peers are here, but one thing I haven't heard is someone speaking on behalf of people with disabilities at maybe the Dick Hauser Center. To be honest, I resent the fact that we were taken out of our own category, lumped in with everybody else, and then without any funding. We served birth-to-life for 20 years. I have served people in this community with disabilities. So, that was quite an insult. So, again, I support number one, number two, and number five. The idea of changing the outcomes mid-cycle, you're going to have a whole bunch of people who spend a lot of hours doing logic models for patent company who are going to be really ticked off if you make us change everything after we did those logic models. It simply doesn't make any sense. The third point I wanted to make was last night in, at the County Commission meeting, we heard that all of the data we've been entering into this system every quarter for CHSP, that data hasn't even been compiled or looked at. Nobody has compiled that information. You're talking about, at the end of this cycle, you will have two years of data that no one's looked at yet. So, how can we move forward? As Kelly Adi said, why not slow down? The data is there. Let's, you know, take our time and look at, at least look at that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Kim. And please don't forget to fill out a card for the record. That'd be great. Is there anybody else that hasn't had a chance to fill out a card but would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to Commissioner's Discussion. Madam Mayor, Pro Tem?
Okay. Thank you all for coming. I received an email late last night that told me I needed to take a closer look, and so that's exactly what I did today. I took a closer look. And I understand that the County Commission did, or chose option, on their own agenda, chose option one, two, and three. And from what I'm hearing tonight from the folks who've spoken, you are not necessarily in favor of this option number three. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Yes, okay. All right. So, I came prepared to support one, two, and five, because I'm just not understanding how you refuse to help all the information that's provided from a renowned School of Florida State University, Ask You School of Public Policy in your deliberation to figure out how this thing happens. And I know that, from what I've heard, something didn't go right. Something went off the rail, and it's up to us to get it back on the rail, because we don't need our residents, our citizens, the aging and the young, and those in between who need help. We don't need them paying the cost of someone not doing a good job on a needs assessment. So, it is my opinion that we need to listen to the people doing this work. And yes, I've talked to the expert in the room. So, I'm very comfortable supporting options one, two, and five.
Motion's been made by the Mayor, Pro Tem, for options one, two, and five. I will second that motion as well. Opening it up for further comment. Oh, before we do that, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, if you don't mind, Mr. Manager, I believe that part of your motion also to make sure that we're in the proper posture is to instruct the City Manager to go back to the County Administrator with the message of what we have approved to see if the county would actually agree with that as well.
Okay. City Manager, I need you to march across the street and tell the county that our people don't like what they did last night. And so, they're here tonight, and we're asking that they will help us come to some reasonable conclusion that will help our agencies provide the services that, the great services that we've grown accustomed to.
Madam Attorney, does that cover the legal definition of what we need to...
I think so. I think it's fully covered.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, if I could add, and I'm clear on the direction, of course, if you vote to do that, with the County Commission taking the position it did last night, certainly the way I would approach that is by reaching out to the County Administrator, indicating the action that the City Commission takes, and asking to work with him toward this end of, in this case, option five. So, I'm clear on the motion as it exists. Thank you.
Excellent. Opening it up for any further comment. Commissioner Matlow, Commissioner Bryant?
Yeah, just first off, just thank you to all of our human services partners that came out tonight. I know you keep coming back again and again, telling us what's happening in your world, and we appreciate it. It's hard to follow every instance, but certainly as a board, I don't think we want to create an additional burden for anybody. And if that comes up and you let us know, I think we're ready to respond. I'll support the motion on the table.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes, let me say, I certainly support the options of one, two, and five. And I think that Kelly Adi said something very, that we need to pay attention to, that we do need to slow down a minute, because I think when this started, and I think it was me, I don't know, but I have a very keen interest in outcome measures. We need to know that money invested yields results that, in fact, were put forth in the beginning, and if not, that it changed along the way. But in order to do that, I think that's how we got to this whole needs assessment, which cannot come back with flawed data for which we are to use to make decisions. So, I want you to know that I'm totally in support of options one, two, and five, but I've not moved back from the belief that we have to have outcome measures associated with what we do. So, hopefully, we'll move forward and get some review and a needs assessment that can stand the test. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Good, Mayor.
So, let me say that I strongly support the motion on the table for options one, two, and five, and proud to second the motion. And I want to thank every single member of the nonprofit community and human services and what you do in this community. Not only do you provide a vital service to our friends and neighbors and family, but also let us not forget the economic return our community gets for every single dollar that is spent through nonprofit services as well. As you know, for 13 years in elected office, I have always been a strong supporter of the CHSP process and funding. Heck, I made the motion for eight years straight, trying to get the funding from $800,000 to a million, and we finally did that at the county. We do have a lot of unknowns that I think we need to take into consideration. As you know, I have personally said and led the charge of the county that I'm in favor of the Children's Services Council, and if that passes on the ballot, how is that positively going to impact our community? How does the expansion of the Enterprise Zone, I mean, the Promise Zone, excuse me, impact positively our community with additional funding? How have other recent decisions negatively impacted our community, and how do we move forward? So, I agree with the motion on the table. And on a final note, kind of unrelated but related, Michael Parker, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with you for the past 13 years in several different capacities, and I just want to personally say thank you as well, and thank you for your last agenda item this evening. With that in mind, all those in favor of the motion on the table, sign five by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Madam, Mayor, Pro Tem?
One of the things that Kelly said also, and I'm listening, is that there are committees for a lot of things, but not one for human services. And I'm not knowing the exact process for that, but I would like to ask City Manager and staff to inform us of what that is, and let's review if this is being handled somewhere else on another committee. Let's make sure we know that, but if not, let's look at what we need to do to make sure we're keeping our eye on the ball for human services, because as Commissioner Matlow mentioned, you know, poverty is still an issue, and poverty affects human beings. We got the trees covered, we got the animals covered, we need to get the people covered, and we need to make sure that we are doing what we need to do. And if we need to bring another committee online to do that, let us know how that occurs, and I'm happy to support that.
Actually, I would ask if you wouldn't mind taking the point and working directly with the City Manager, working directly with the community, the nonprofit community, to help shape what that looks like and bring it back. You have the opportunity to bring it back to the Commission as well. If you wouldn't mind, that'd be great.
I would be happy to do that.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add, and I look forward to that, Mayor, Pro Tem, we'll certainly have those conversations and get informed, make sure we've got the best posture. I don't want it to be mistaken, though. We do have a very, very committed allocation committee for the CHSP process, a lot of volunteers.
Oh, yeah, I met them.
Yeah, and you met them. I don't want it to be, because we all know and appreciate them, not to be confused with them.
Right, not to be confused with them. You're right. We met them. They do a dynamic job. They keep everybody in shape. I heard them.
Yeah, they do fantastic. Thank you.
Excellent. Colleagues, let me just mention, too, we do not have a public hearing tonight. I should have mentioned about 5:30. I'm just plowing through, because we're getting to the end. If you need to step out, please feel free to do so. We have the legislative briefing. Christian won't take it personally. We do have speakers on unengaged items. We do have the sharing of ideas, but please, by all means, if you need to take a second, feel free to do so. We will now move on to item number 13.09. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. This is the last item in your policy section, so I think we're moving along swiftly tonight. I know Christian will be brief.
Brother, brief. Be brief, brother, be brief.
And as you know, he's providing, Christian and his team are providing weekly updates, but we'll take the opportunity at the Commission meetings during the legislative session here in January and February to make sure you're kept up to date on the goings-on across the street. So, Christian?
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Commissioners. I'll be brief. This week, the major milestone is the release of the House and Senate Subcommittee Draft Budgets. So, I have some good news to share. We've, as you know, we put in three appropriation requests. Our tempo appropriation request right now is funded in the House Subcommittee Budget at $300,000. And then, our wastewater pump, Station 12, is funded in the Senate, fully funded in their draft Subcommittee Budget for $750,000. So, we are working closely with our Legislative Affairs Team to continue to make sure that makes its way through the process. Regarding policy items, as you know, we're tracking several that have impact to our services, but there is one conversation that I just want to highlight that has the, maybe the largest potential to impact our economy, and that's the conversation on state worker and teacher raises. Just for a little size and shape, that could impact our local economy by roughly $40 million, and how that breaks down approximately 2,500 public school teachers here. The governor's proposed a $6,000 per year base pay increase. So, that's $15 million on impact on local wages. And then, with state workers, we have more than $48,000 here locally, and an average wage, median wage, of $51,000. So, 1% increase across the board, that's $25 million. So, again, just want to say, there is some really great conversation happening, and we're tracking that, and it stands to really have a great impact on our local economy. Going forward, February 5th, each chamber will begin to assemble their respective budgets from the subcommittees that they're at, and then March 5th, the conference starts to bring it all together. So, I'll be bringing an update every month, and then, in addition, my weekly updates over email. I'm here to take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for the, could you move the chair so I can, thank you. Any questions from our colleagues? Any speakers on this particular item?
There are no speakers on this item.
Okay, excellent. Any questions?
Thank you, Christian.
Thank you.
All right. And no action, correct? It's just...
Just an update.
That's just an update. Do we have any other items under Policy Formations 13?
No, sir.
All right. We are on unengaged business speakers. This is the opportunity for the public to please come and to comment on anything that was not on the agenda this evening. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers?
We do. Mayor, we've got 10 or 12 speakers on a variety of topics. The first is Joseph Batavia. I believe I saw him leave the chamber, so...
He's here. He's here. He came back in. Joseph, thanks for joining us. Name and address for the record, please.
And after him will be Harry Brown.
How you doing, Mayor and committee?
Good to see you.
Happy New Year's to Leon County, Tallahassee, Florida, and America. I've got four things to address. One of them, I have a question at the end.
Okay.
I know it's three minutes, so I'm a slow reader. If you guys could give me like a...
Go ahead.
Okay. This is baby, my service animal. She's been with me for four years since she was a puppy. I've been gone through an auto accident, hit and run, six miles an hour in the country. My body got hit. I cracked my skull, rotated cuff damage, collarbone, dislocated upper middle and lower of my spine, fractured foot, non-repaired on my right and my left. Those are my illnesses. I have mental illnesses as well, PTSD, bipolar disorder, three stages of bipolar disorder, alcohol syndrome, and ADHD. People can't tell my illnesses, because I look normal. But this is why I don't want people to start judging a book by its cover. My second thing is CDC.gov, one in four US adults, 61 million Americans have a disability that impacts major life activities, according to the report in CDC. The next thing I want to do is read a quote off one of my father's books. It's called Wisdom of Chair, 30 Years of Quadriplegic. It's based on the ADA, and, oh, yeah, Happy Martin Luther King. I wasn't here for you guys when you guys did it. I saw it on your channel. I just want to tell you, this goes back to, I think, 1960-something, but I want to read a passage, and I'm not sure with the code enforcement for ADA, but Section 36.201, Governor, I mean, General, sorry, General, that's the code for the ADA. So, if people aren't following the ADA, we have a problem. I'm trying to work where we can find a solution to secure the service animals. I'm getting tired of hearing snakes, birds, fake service sounds where I caught barking in public places. I even went to say yesterday at the Capitol, a dog lunged at my dog out of the elevator and barked at my dog on 10th floor. That's unacceptable. She said it's a service animal, but it's not trained properly. We need to enforce that properly. If it's a government law, a federal law, we as the public and the government supposed to enforce it. Police departments have badges, we enforce that. We have gun license, we enforce that. We have driver's license, we enforce that. My second thing is a quote I want to read you guys. It's off Wisdom of Chair, page 222, the ADA Regulations, and I quote, "The implementation of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. This landmark piece of legislation modeled after the Civil Rights Act of 1964 that outlawed discrimination based on color, race, sex, religion, or..." National... Excuse me, can I... How do you say that word?
National...
"national origin," unquote. We have a situation all around America. People have been talking all around America. I've been following it since 2012. She's my second service animal. Buddy was my first. Sarasota was one of the places, Broward County is another, and I'm here. You guys have signs as our home, our city. I ain't felt like that, but you have a beautiful city. I love the history. I love every, the culture you guys have, the way you guys structured it. I love the architecture. I love the way it is. Your city is a lot different from my city. We're in a very fast-paced downtown, southern Broward County. It's really different, but I enjoy being here. But I'm an activist to make sure we could implement something better. I have been talking to a lot of people. I've been gathering a lot of information. People complaining. People aren't doing the proper training. Another example, I got bitten by a dog right here by the library on Park Ave. They said it's a mental beating's training. Sorry to say this. Your dog park, not dog park, your animal place over there by Tom Brown had the training for a beating's training. If I was a trainer and I have a beating's training, I will make sure they don't go anywhere. They go straight home, to the bathroom, home, to the bathroom. That's it.
Joseph, I'm gonna need you to wrap it up for me.
And that's all I want to say. If there's any way we could add on the driver's license, where law enforcement has our backs. When we tell the truth and help everybody, when we know the laws and regulations, we're going to teach people when they have service hours. We're not violating laws, but we need some way to, I need, I need city. Oh, I forgot.
Joseph, I need you to help me wrap up, man.
Oh, can I, there's going to be a, this year's 30-year anniversary.
We'll work on it with the proclamation. Yep.
I'm done.
You're the man.
Thank you.
Hey, good to see you again.
And you guys have a good one, and hopefully this could be an awesome year.
Sounds good, man. Good to see you.
You guys have a good one. God bless you.
Thanks, Joseph. Our next speaker?
Next speaker is Harry Brown, followed by Triton Swiger Johnson.
All righty. Mr. Brown, good to see you, sir. Thank you for your service.
It was a pleasure. But I can say one thing, it wasn't a pleasure working here at City Hall for 20 years. How many minutes do we get now to speak?
Three minutes, sir.
Three minutes?
Yes, sir. And your name and address, please.
I had heard that there was five sometime back.
I'm sorry?
I had heard there were five minutes now, and I was getting ready to compliment you for giving the speaker now five minutes. But anyway, I'm Harry Brown. I resigned at 5431 Crump Road, Tallahassee, Florida. I'm here to speak regarding the way the Chief of Police, Antonio Gilliam, contract was handled. I think that was deplorable. It was a total snafu. I don't think there's any one of you who'd love to have had your contract handled the way his was. And I'm here to speak because this is the same way my hiring was handled on July 1st, 1982. I came here thinking I was going to be doing one thing, and when I was hired, I was totally told to do something, I would be doing something else. First of all, I had to work for my supervisor's secretary, who gave me my orders to pick up her mail from the mailroom. And I did that for my first six months until I completed my probation. After that, I told her I could no longer handle doing her work and mine, too, because I had too much responsibility. Now, I was given a very modicum salary of $1,354 a month. And I had the responsibility of heating and air conditioning, receiving, security, and housekeeping. And I had the full responsibility of moving over 200 people into City Hall from outlining buildings. And I was putting in so much overtime that there was one young white supervisor who saw the overtime that I was putting in. He said, "Harry, are you getting paid for all that overtime you're putting in?" I said, "No, they told me from the pay grade I am, I don't get overtime." He said, "Harry, that's not true." He said, "What I'll do, I'll leave a couple pages in this file cabinet." He showed it to me, where I have people who are higher pay grades than you, who get paid overtime. So I took that information to the temporary city manager, who was Joe Gibbs. I think his name was Joe Gibbs at the time, but anyway, I took that information to him. Less than an hour later, I had a check written for $3,500 because I was smart enough to have kept my desk calendar annotated with the hours that I was putting in.
You're getting near to three minutes.
Beg your pardon?
Just letting you know you're getting near to three minutes.
Thank you. I've been here long enough to know my time about that. But anyway, you'll be seeing me for a lot of time in the future because I've got a lot to tell you about what I experienced here during my 20 years here, or 19 years and three months at City Hall. It was a horrible and hellacious situation. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, Mr. Brown. Our next speaker?
Next is Triton Swiger Johnson, and then Whitfield Leland.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. My name is Triton Swiger Johnson. I'm at 3025 South Adams Street. First, I want to say congratulations to Cassandra Jackson on her great achievement. That was amazing. Today, I just kind of want to bring some awareness about my upcoming adventures that I'm trying to ensue. I'm starting a nonprofit in Tallahassee, and I do need help as much as possible from not just our city commissioners and the mayor and other, you know, people, but also within our community. About Tri-Piece, what it is, is a nonprofit organization geared to bring love to our single-parent homes, hope to our homeless, and peace to our youth. Tri-Piece is going to lead the force in providing support to, but not limited to, single-parent homes due to divorce, incarceration, or death of a parent. We're going to instill hope into our homeless suffering with mental illnesses and disabilities, and provide peace to our youth at risk in foster care, living in single-parent homes and at risk. We want to uplift the individuals in our entire community through curating events, seminars, workshops, and cosponsorships to promote and provide healthy living, peace in our community, and overall progression in our citizens. We plan to increase our community involvement in our community by providing and cosponsoring events, seminars, workshops, not just for, but with our people in need and those providing. We want to be the liaison between the people and those that are providing these services because a lot of them don't get enough awareness, and a lot of those that need the services don't know where to find them. What we want to do is promote adulthood, fundamentals, job placement skills, entrepreneurship, education, healthy lifestyles, individualism, self-expression, and overall community involvement. Together, we're going to bring love to our single-parent homes, instill hope to our homeless, and provide peace to our youth. The reason I'm starting this nonprofit is because personally I was affected by all three of these areas. My father, he suffered, I actually just learned this within the last few months, that he was schizophrenic, and he did pass when I was five due to drug abuse. My mother, she was diagnosed with severe bipolar and depression disorder, amongst other health issues. And we were homeless several times before I was entered into the foster care system, where actually I believe I spoke at this same podium several years ago to help a bill and just kind of bring awareness to it. But I also grew up in the foster care system for seven and a half years. And when I left the foster care system, I noticed that there was a lot of fundamental issues that I lacked next to my peers in college and within the community. And so I did struggle for several years on this, and it's just learning about what I didn't know. And what I, you know, there's information that we know, we know. There's also information that we do not know, that we might struggle in and that we need help in. So what I ask for is, I've sent a few emails out just through different connections that I made recently. But what I'd love to be able to do is just help our community as much as possible and work within you guys and other, you know, high-stake individuals so that we can bring awareness to it. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for coming out, and best luck to you. Whatever we did to help, that'd be great. Next speaker?
Whitfield Leland, and then Thomas Tobby.
We're great. How are you?
I'm doing great. My name is Whitfield Leland. I reside at 754 West 7th Avenue. I had came here today, and I had wrote some stuff, but you know what? We're going to scratch that. I want to talk to y'all about what's going on in the low-income communities. We spend a lot of time addressing infrastructure elsewhere and building this and building that, when we actually got, we actually have lives that need attention. I'm the Vice President and Community Coordinator of a local organization called Link Up. What we do is we bridge the gaps within the community. We do not create any type of, we don't create any programs. We bring what we already have. What we have, what we have noticed is the disconnect to the resources. Not saying that the resources are not in Tallahassee, but it's a disconnect because some of the resources are not accessible, too, because some don't have transportation, some don't have jobs, some don't have means to actually get what they need to get, to get the resources. Everybody sitting on the panel, we have also Sanchala Propose. I don't know if everybody got it. I don't think Reese got it, though. He probably hasn't seen it. But we have Sanchala Propose. Our goal is to implement and be the gap, bridge the gap in the communities. We also notice that a lot of our kids and a lot of our parents, that we do have programs. I'm going to use Temple. I love to use Temple for example. Temple is a great program. We don't dis-support it. But we do have, we do find a problem in it because it only, it only supports 16 to 24-year-olds. And at the end of the day, you could take a child that's 15 out of a household and give him all the help he wants. But if you put him back in the household without the household getting any help, all your efforts, nine out of 10, is going to be pushed back down the drain. So what we're asking to do is, we're asking that the city look at, strongly look at, putting resources. And I'm not talking about people. Make an investment, like y'all making investments for infrastructure. Make an investment in the low-income community to bring proper resources and put people that genuinely care about uplifting these people and not people that are just chasing a pocketbook. That's what I want to say. Y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker?
Next is Thomas Tobby, if I got the last name correct.
Next speaker?
No response. The next is Kurt Bender. And then after that, Teresa Wells.
Kurt Bender at 2315 Columbia Court, 32304. The purpose for me coming here is to provide some accountability. I was recently involved in Tallahassee Startup Week and received a grant from the Community Redevelopment Agency. It was a $5,000 small event grant. I'd like you all to know that we put it to excellent use, and I have some great reports to let you all know about. I know that the CRA grants tomorrow, but I cannot get the time off work, so that's why I'm here today. And also to engage with our leaders. Three topics: what we did well with the Startup Week, what we can improve in, and what we're doing moving forward. What we did this year that was a bit different is that we decentralized and we established a nonprofit to run Tallahassee Startup Week. We had over 13 events, hundreds of attendees, and we found some pretty cool metrics. The majority of engagers were women. Our responders were 80% women that responded. It's something that we're very happy about because we want to get more women and other minority groups involved in Startup Week and also starting businesses. Also, what we did very well is that we expanded our funding. We learned of the CRA grant, which is a wonderful resource provided by the City of Tallahassee. Thank you all for that resource. And also, we actually had some individuals outside of the Tallahassee community provide funding, so we got some of their money to invest in here. A pretty cool fact, there's a local entrepreneur. His name is Michael. He started a company called Night Capit, and the purpose of that is to prevent date rape drink spiking. It is a pretty unique product. You can Google it, and he is doing exceptionally well. And he received the outside funding that we brought into the City of Tallahassee. A quick thing that we hope to improve upon for next year is that new faces. We've noticed that it's been the same entrepreneurial committee and community that's been providing most of the services. I would like to introduce very briefly two gentlemen that are here today of a new, a group of faces. They're fresh. One is Ashton Jones, and the other is Armande Davis. Ashton is a new entrepreneur. He was an FSU student. He took advantage of the TCC resources, the free mentoring. He's launching his own app product. He's a self-taught developer to help individuals connect with one another. Armande is a recent FSU grad, and he is a marketing person, and he will help us get the word out about Startup Week and other great programs that we have going on here in Tallahassee. Moving forward, the last point is three goals that we have for, are our three goals that we have for next year is when individuals think of startup, they think of internet. But we would very much involve brick-and-mortar businesses moving forward, and I see that my time is running down. We have the goal for next year, Startup Week, which will be actually this year, 2020, is to get at least five individuals gainfully employed, whether it's part-time or full-time, for a span of 12 months. And to not let this be an awesome secret. I'd like to thank Mayor John Daly. You attended the Tallahassee Startup Week kickoff event to show your support. It was very much appreciated. And also, just a city commissioner, thank you all very much for your voice. Mr. Stanley Sims that spoke earlier, I know him. He is a lovely character, and he very much enjoys having the audience. Especially another shout-out to Triton. I had lunch with him this past weekend. Gentleman has a wonderful story. He has a wonderful idea, and it's individuals like that that would make a great difference.
You're at three minutes.
Lastly, I have to leave, and last time I was here, Commissioner Richardson graciously offered to write me a hall pass going back to work. I did not know I would be here so long, so I may need that hall pass. So I don't get in any trouble. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Next is Teresa Wells, and speaking on what was item 1302, your recycling item. She was not able to be here earlier in the meeting, so speaking now.
Teresa, it's good to see you.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's so nice to be here on this gloomy rainy day. I'd like to clarify, I'm Teresa Wells. I live at 1227 North M.L. King Jr. Boulevard, Tallahassee 32303. First, I'd like to clarify my role today. I reach out to y'all with my concerns personally, on behalf of different organizations. Today, I'm here to read a statement from John Hedrick, Chair of our Democratic Environmental Caucus of Leon County. Dear Mayor Daly and Tallahassee City Commissioners, we would like to thank you for your earlier approval this afternoon on an agreement with Marpan, which will allow our residential recycling program to continue for the short term and to hire consultants to help determine where our local governments go from here on this issue. With the topic of our recycling program on the agenda today, we feel it is time to more specifically address items within recycling, including single-use plastic straws, plastics, and styrofoam. Our caucus supports your moving toward quickly banning, with an exception for the disabled community, the use of single-use plastic straws on governmental properties and offense, both directly through the government and through vendors and concessionaires. We further urge you to place our community on a track to ban the use and sale of these products, again with the exception of plastic straws for our disabled community. Within the next two years, as is being considered and done in various localities around the country, the timing could not be better to move forward on these areas as you consider revisions in the recycling program to try to reduce waste at its various sources. Finally, our caucus would like to thank Commissioner Williams Cox for first even introducing the issue of plastic straws to the mayor and the rest of the commission. Sincerely, John Hedrick.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And the other speakers?
Yes, sir. The next speaker is Lakey Love, and then followed by Sacha Starkpiner.
Lakey, thanks for joining us. Name and address for the record, please.
Lakey Love, 1511 Melvin Street. I'm here today on two specific issues. The first is that as a discriminated against and subjugated member of the LGBTQIA+ community, I'm very disappointed that we're not discussing the conversion therapy ban ordinance today. We were led to believe last city commission meeting that the conversion therapy ban would get the quickest public hearing that it could get. Unpaid volunteers of the marginalized community have worked and met with city commissioners and with the mayor's office. We also met with the city attorney. We did research. We supplied information. We organized to turn out 60 to 80 people here tonight, and then had to back-organize, spending hours of organizational labor to meet with you all and get the conversion therapy ban passed. I am very disappointed with this body. We were given no reason for the delay, and we were told that we were going to wait until March 11th. That is unacceptable. Power never moves without a demand, and our community demands that we put, we get a public hearing for the conversion therapy ban ordinance amongst this body as soon as possible, preferably the next city commission meeting. And I know that Commissioner Williams Cox knows how hard it is to organize, having done the Southside Citizens United Action Organization. It takes a lot of energy to organize grassroots efforts. This was a grassroots effort that would speak loud and clear to the state legislature, and I'm very disappointed in this body. I'm also very disappointed in the body's response to everything that happened to get the new chief of police. We are appalled as a community, as a white member of a primarily black Southside community, that we would have a chief of police who was a member of an all-white squad. That, we have gathered tons of testimony from Southside members about his involvement in terrorizing and harassing Southside youth during the 80s and 90s until he was tabled and put out of the streets. and put out of the streets and into office. He gunned down an unarmed black teenager. There were over 50 witnesses of that event, all of which were not heard. We have testimony from the family and from witnesses, and many members of this commission stood in solidarity at a press conference saying that they would back this chief of police. I just went to go watch Just Mercy last night.
You've got about 15 seconds.
And take note of the fact that the sheriff in that situation that was terrorizing the black community was elected into office six times after the horror of what he had done was exposed. It is 2020, it is time for Tallahassee to remove itself from this horrible racist southern behavior.
Thank you for coming up.
Next speaker is Satya Starkbainer, then Regina Joseph.
My name is Satya Starkbainer. I live at 724 Flag Street, Tallahassee, Florida. A number of things are on my mind this evening. First and foremost, the open hearing, the public hearing that we were to have today on the ordinance to ban conversion therapy in Tallahassee. Last month, the entire City Commission acknowledged that practices known as conversion therapy are neither conversion nor therapy. The entire City Commission acknowledged that attempts to coerce an individual to change their gender and/or sexual orientation are harmful and dangerous, and that such practices have no place in Tallahassee. We were promised a public hearing today on this ordinance to ban conversion therapy, which was carefully researched and boldly written by local, directly impacted people organized and supported by the Tallahassee Community Action Committee. At the last minute and with no explanation, you pushed it back another month, all while the state legislature threatens to codify abuse and denial of care to queer, trans, and gender non-conforming young people. This timing is quite an insult to the local working-class, directly impacted queer and trans people who wrote the ordinance, who rearranged their lives to attend December's City Commission meeting, who did so again for today, who suddenly had to arrange and rearrange transporta- transportation, re-request time off from work to attend next month instead. Please get this public hearing as soon as possible. Do not drag your feet. Do not let the state legislature take the lead in this fight. They are taking it in a hateful and harmful direction. The rest of the state refers to Tallahassee as shorthand for the state legislature, so pardon my play on words, but it's time for Tallahassee to stand up to Tallahassee. With regards to the recent selection process for the Tallahassee Chief of Police, uh... the killing of George Williams, also known as Lil Nuke, by Lawrence Revel, and the details about it were kept out of the supposedly very select, very transparent selection process. Revel should never have been a candidate. Secondly, you did Gilliam dirty.
You're at almost three minutes.
Thank you. And thirdly, the date of December 26th for the announcement of Revel's appointment was... just rude. It was rude and sudden, and it was when people were occupied with holidays, with travel, with childcare, given that their kids are out of school at that time. for a body that likes to pat itself on the back for transparency...
If you could go ahead and wrap it up, you're, you're over three minutes.
Thank you. This is my last sentence. For a body that likes to pat itself on the back for transparency and inclusion of public input, recent actions have me quite saddened, and doubly so, because especially with regards to the ordinance to ban conversion therapy, I was very eager to be so proud of my elected officials.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, Jim.
Next speaker is Regina Joseph, and that's the last person for whom I have a speaker card. If there's anybody else who wishes to speak, now would be the time to fill out a card.
Ms. Joseph, if you would, please state your name and your address. You have three minutes.
Regina Joseph, Flag Street. I'm here today because I am absolutely disappointed with the city going forward with getting a killer cop into the chief of police, and I want to let everyone know right now that if you support that action, that we will do everything possible to make sure that you do not have your seat next time November or whenever your seat comes up. It's absolutely disgusting. Revel was part of an alpha squad who terrorized the good-bred community and people within Tallahassee, you know, literally, you know, going within neighborhoods, speeding through police, with police cars. A bunch of teenagers told Revel and his alpha squad, "Hey, there are kids here," and he responded, "It doesn't matter, you're gonna die anyways." Literally, this is coming from witnesses, and it's very obvious that the City Commission does not care about the people of Tallahassee, especially black people. So our demands are to make sure that Revel is out. We want to make sure that Reese Goat is out, and we're gonna do everything possible to make sure that this sort of corruption and nepotism no longer stands. So you will see us, this will not be the last time you'll hear from us, and like I said, this is a warning. You stand against us, you are going down.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Are there any other speakers?
I believe we have one more speaker, and I'll just gather that card at the end of the meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name is V. Miller, 3034 O'Brien Drive, pronouns are they/them/theyres. It's been a little while since I've been in this chamber. I know many of you from my time at Rethink Energy Florida. Today, I'm just here on my own, absolutely not speaking for them, but I am, I have come to give a comment on something that's really no less close to my heart, and that's the conversion therapy ordinance or the lack thereof today. I will speak, of course, about my experience on the fracking campaign, which was opposed to what Rethink Energy Florida did. So when we first started years and years ago, the first step that we took to ban fracking in Florida was to get a lot of local bans, similar to the conversion therapy ban that many of us had hoped to see today. Now, the City of Tallahassee actually did ban fracking. I know that many of you know that. I know Commissioner Richardson was there when it happened, so, you know, once again, thank you. But we did that essentially for the same reason that we're focusing on a conversion therapy ban now, which is that if we let the state legislature lead and dictate policy for our communities, then we usually end up regretting it as much as I'd like to think that they work in our best interest. That's not always the case. Well, that rationale is just as true with conversion therapy and this conversion therapy ban as it was true of this local ban on fracking a few years ago. And it's especially important because conversion therapy, as we all know, isn't actually based on science and is frankly a deceptive business practice that should be illegal and is frankly illegal by state law anyway, although, of course, the Florida Legislature right now has two bills, one in each chamber, that might preempt our local control and our ability to say so. So I want to just end and urge you not to delay any longer and to fast-track this ordinance. By the time March rolls around, the legislature has made a lot of their decisions, there might be a lot of momentum around the statewide preemption of conversion therapy, or no, the statewide preemption of conversion therapy bans, and y'all, a lot of people are gonna suffer for that. So I don't know why we didn't hear this today, but can we please fast-track this and hear this next time as soon as possible? Our lives are at stake. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers this evening?
Do have one additional speaker who I just got a card for, and that is Brandon Mears, and I believe that'll be the last speaker, Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thanks for joining us this evening. Your name and address, please, for the record.
Yeah, my name's Brandon Mears. I just wanted to speak on a couple topics. The first one was that Tallahassee has just supposedly decriminalized the possession of marijuana. I was wanting to try to push an initiative forward, a proposal to possibly make Tallahassee the first city in Florida to legalize it for recreational or social use among adults 21 or older. Also, possibly maybe doing that as far as like other cities and counties, just to move forward with the legalization of cannabis for adult use. I believe that, you know, it would be beneficial not only for the city and its economy, but also for the state, for as many benefits as cannabis has been proven to have, not just for medical use, but I find a lot of benefits or beneficial use from socializing the recreational use of it. Another issue I just wanted to speak on is possibly putting a proposal for us for a rail metro for the Florida Department of Transportation here, maybe somehow putting that together with the proposal and initiative for the, the one that's going for the hangar for the airport, maybe doing a proposal for a local metro for maybe around the capital That's possible. I don't know about that, but that's basically just what I wanted to comment on. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
No, sir.
Excellent. Is there anybody else here that hasn't had a chance to speak that would like to have the opportunity to speak tonight? Okay. Your name and address for the record, please.
Tallahassee, we're on the Frenchtown area. Um, can I say this? Thank you for letting me speak, definitely. I want to tell you that I feel that the way that the process of hiring this chief of police was unjust. I don't think that it was really fair as far as the contract with Gilliam. I, I'm absolutely disappointed with the hiring of a chief of police that is a conflict to the community. A lot of people in the community are terrified of this person and the alpha squad that ran with him back in the 80s and in the 90s. I'm also concerned about the incident itself, is how he killed the young boy, as far as like having no weapons of any sort on him. He was shot in the head, and I don't think that that's a police training to like shoot a person in the head, period. I think you're supposed to take body shots to try to like, just take them down, not to put them out. So I question his intent, which makes me unsettled and uncomfortable with having such a person being the chief of police in my, in my city. As City Commissioners, I believe that the process was unfair as far as the timing. I'm not sure what your objective was behind closed doors, but it didn't really include the community, and that's where I'm disappointed. We all didn't get a word. We all weren't heard. The, the people that are impacted in the community weren't heard. We didn't have a voice as to how we felt about the situation or the choice. There's a cloud of fear that's hovering over this community. It's a cloud of fear, and it keeps people from speaking up and speaking out about what they feel is right or wrong, and that puts us in jeopardy as far as like what we're trying to do for our community, programs, projects, construction, and that's the reason why you don't hear a lot of people come up here and speak about what they want to say. And that needs to change. I live in this town, and I've been here for over 20 years, and I feel that if I'm, you know, after being here so long and me observing how things are being handled here and how things are being processed here, I feel that...
You're at three minutes.
It needs to be, thank you. It needs to do better. I think our City Commission Board needs to do much more better by the community and the impacted people in the community and what we want.
Thank you. I need you to wrap up your comments, please.
We need a new city manager, we do, and we need to reevaluate about this chief of police because, again, I don't understand how you're gonna get that trust from a community when there's no closure. I don't know how you're gonna get the trust from the people that were affected by this previous police officer, term chief police.
I need you to wrap up your comments, please.
You're at four, you're at four minutes.
So my thing is, is that I think we need to rethink this through.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
If you would...
Do we have any other comments? Anybody else that cares to speak?
No, Mayor, but I would ask the last speaker, if you would, fill out a speaker card. The gentleman in the back with the blue shirt can, can help you out with that.
Sure, for the record. Seeing none, we are gonna move into Commissioner's discussion, sharing of ideas. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a great community effort tonight, but we have some exciting things happening in our community, and I'm glad you asked me what. Let me tell you, tomorrow...
What?
At Astoria Park, we're gonna do a big thing, and you don't want to miss it. It's, the Leon County School Board will be there, just to give you a little hint, a little teaser. We're hoping that others will join us because regardless of what some may think, we are doing our best to make this a better community, and we know that educational activities are gonna help us, help our children be able to take our places one day. So join me tomorrow at noon at Astoria Park. Be there or be square.
Excellent. Wonderful. Commissioner Richardson.
Two things. Mr. Mayor and colleagues, my neighbor is Lynnanne Griffin, who is part-owner in Strong and Jones Funeral Home. She stopped me on the street today in front of my house in the rain and made me listen to her while she told me about the fact that we need more cemetery space...
Yes.
...in Tallahassee. She said it's really becoming an issue, and it's something that we need to address real soon. She said the Southside Cemetery is full. There are no more plots in that cemetery, and so I told her I would bring this issue to the commission and the city manager this evening to get it on the radar screen as something that we desperately need to, to address. And then the other issue is, you know, as you all recall from our tour of Frenchtown and particularly the Good Bread Lane area, there were certainly some things that they asked for that I'd like to see us, if we, if it's the consensus of the commission to direct the city manager to, to address in that neighborhood. The ones that they brought to our attention was the playground, of course. I was so embarrassed to see that thing shown on TV last night on the news, but they did the best they could in that respect. But certainly that, the drainage issues that they talked about and the flooding, the lighting, and there was one other. I can't remember what the other one was, but if we could get those fast-tracked outside of the Neighborhood First Plan that's being implemented, because I think those need to be addressed almost immediately.
Agreed.
Okay. Those are the only two issues I had.
Excellent. Commissioner Bryant. Commissioner Matliff.
Yeah, I agree also with that direction for Good Bread, I think. Those are easy fixes that we can get, you know, going right away and make a big impact. On conversion therapy, I know at the end of the last meeting, there was direction to kind of work with citizens groups, and has that all been completed? Are we ready to move forward?
We have that scheduled for the first meeting in, in March for an introduction and then for the public hearing at the last meeting in March. We have met, I have had my assistant, my deputy city attorney, to meet with a number of people, and they came and met... of people, and they came and met with her, and we're considering some of the things they said, reviewing and researching so that we can provide for you the most constitutionally sound ordinance that we can.
Okay. So where we are right now, would it be possible to move that up to February, the introduction of ordinance?
I would prefer not to do that, because what I'm doing is doing a great deal of research, make sure that, as I said, that I recommend to you the most constitutionally sound ordinance that I can.
Okay.
I do know Equality Florida is still working with us on the language. I mean, I talked to general counsel on Monday night at their reception. So, I mean, it's not just us. All the groups are still at the table, working together on this to make sure that we have the right language.
Okay. And I know this is a hard, hard process, and I know we got to get the language right, and we want something that everybody's agree on, because when we adopt this, we want widespread community support. We don't want there to be... We all want to, I think, lead on the same foot on this, so, you know, I'm in support of getting it done as quick as possible with agreed language.
Correct.
Secondly, there was conversation tonight, and I know they've come out to a few meetings, Mr. Woodfield and Mr. Davis, about link up. Personally, I'm ready to link up. I know they sent a proposal. I know it might not be exactly what we can do, but I'd like to see us... How can we set up a pilot program? How can we start working together? And we might not be able to open up a community center for five nights in a row, but maybe there's one night we can do. And if we could direct staff to come back with something that... How do we start the partnership? What's the first step?
If I can say something to give Commissioner some additional information. I've been working very closely with Hubba Bubba, and which is, that's Mr. Leland. I directed him to Pat Holliday, because there are some things that, some organizational things that we've required of other organizations, that we're making, want to make sure that he is doing those things, and so we're walking him through that process. There are some things that he's doing that will definitely are things that will help fill in the gap, but we want to make sure that he has everything in place, and he understands that. We talk very, we talk often. He's talking with Deputy City Manager Barber. He's talking to Parks and Rec. So he understands what we're trying to do, and we're working in that direction. There are some things that he could possibly do that won't require that, but for now, to make sure, because there's going to, he has an ask in his proposal. And before we can give money for ask, we've got to make sure that organizations are, you know, where they need to be legally and what have you.
And exactly, and I think we're advocating for the same thing. And I'm saying, if we have space and we can start one night a week or something, continue that conversation, and if there's something that's not necessarily a monetary asset, needs to go through CHSP, if there's a partnership that can be created. That's all I got.
All right. We're going to go back around real quick, because I want everybody that has hired an intern to be with us, if their interns are here. If you'd like to introduce them, Commissioner Richardson, we'll start with you and work our way back. That'd be great.
My intern, Raquel Robinson, is here.
Excellent.
She is a student at Florida State University, hailing from Pembroke Pines, Florida. My best friend from college lives in Pembroke Pines. That's why I had to say that. Thank you, Raquel. And she's doing an excellent job for us, by the way. She tells me that I'm very much like her dad. I took that as a compliment.
Dr. Bryant, Mayor Protim, I know that you all are in the process of hiring, and we look forward to welcoming your interns when they come onboard at the appropriate time. Commissioner Matliff?
Yeah, thank you. We had our new intern, Emily Sabah, with us tonight. She actually went out to Myers Park to greet their neighborhood association. So we're looking forward to her, and we have a couple more coming onboard shortly also.
Now, I'd like to introduce Olivia and Ashley that are interning in the mayor's office. Olivia is a student at Florida State University. Ashley is a student at FAMU, and we've got a great team, and welcome aboard. I do not have anything else for the evening. Seeing no other business before us, we stand adjourned.